All right, we're fixing to call this meeting to order, so if everyone can please find your seat. All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order and have a roll call. Here?
Here.
Here.
I make a motion to approve the agenda. Do I get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're going to move on to new business, so take the floor.
Thank you, commissioners, and thank you, members of Otero County, for showing up tonight for this very important meeting. And we had to accommodate far more people, so we also thank the Flickinger Center for opening up this auditorium. Why are we here tonight? This is going to be our final presentation of our efforts with respect to an audit that was commissioned in partnership with the Otero County Commission, as well as a vulnerability assessment report. And what I want to tell you right now is that these machines, if you're out there listening, are enslavement devices. And we're going to talk about why these are enslavement devices. This past weekend, I had the good fortune of going to the Navajo Nation, and there was an expression, and I think it's apt, that civilization is where you have the honor beaten out of you. We all know that there is a major, major black cloud over the massive amounts of fraud that have been uncovered across the country, but yet we're all being ensnared with civilization, with lawyers, with doublespeak, and we're just trying to get to the truth. But don't take my word for it. Behind me, you have the most recent Rasmussen poll from July 7th, 2022. And there are some startling things that I hope our public officials will take note of, whether you agree with the findings of this audit team or not. First of all, 50% of all voters, not just Democrats, not Republicans, not independents, all voters, believe widespread cheating will affect the outcome of the November 2022 election. That's not my poll, that's Rasmussen's. Why do they feel that way? Because we haven't recovered from November 3rd, 2020, and the poll is just as clear. It says, between 52% and 59%, a clear majority of American voters, and tested multiple times, maintain that cheating likely affected the outcome of the 2020 national elections. Just two days ago, a former president by the name of Donald Trump had his residents raided, and he's been the most vocal proponent of what's going on here with these fixed rigged elections. And the persecution has not just been left for the former president, but many people involved in this audit. Death threats, threats of criminal prosecution. I even had a political operative tell me that I'm going to jail before this meeting started. That's the kind of stuff that we've had to deal with, political persecution of one of your commissioners here. So before I hand over the mic, we need to go back in time and say, and ask how we got here. The last time we had a vote before this commission, there was a unanimous vote, 3-0, to move away from Dominion and to move away from drop boxes. And we were all so, so thrilled with that, that show of confidence. And then we were surprised with something we didn't ask for, which was after the primary election, which was wrought with fraud throughout the state, that these same commissioners voted 3-0 to withhold certification. And I wasn't expecting that because that was courage. And immediately, the Secretary of State filed a lawsuit with the New Mexico Supreme Court, writ of mandamus, declaring that they must, they shall, they shall certify, because if they don't, if they don't, we will refer them for criminal prosecution. And removal from office. Does that seem right to you all? Does that seem like it's going to restore public trust? And did they afford this county commission due process to respond? No, they did not. So we're here again. And CNN wrote a recent article which all but confirms that our position about the law is the correct one. And we're going to hope that you guys maintain that vote that still stands with respect to Dominion. And here's why. This is a quote from a CNN article provided by Alex Curtis, who's the Communications Director of the Secretary of State. He says, "In New Mexico, state officials scrambled to develop an ad hoc plan that included asking the state's high court to designate an alternate canvassing board to certify the Otero results had the county commissioners defy the court order," said Alex Curtis, a spokesman for Oliver. I know that the commission's getting a lot of legal advice about the law, but as a former law professor, I can tell you this. The Supreme Court interprets the law, they don't write the law, and they had a plan that said they were going to create an alternative commission to certify in a rubber stamp an election, and they have no legal authority to do that. The people that install these folks to certify are you, not the Supreme Court, yet that happened. The other thing that we've maintained is that you all have the power to certify or withhold certification. Yes, to withhold certification, because to certify something is to say it's trustworthy. Yet we all have questions, the American people have questions. And the law was clear that right now, our election systems are not up to standards, the most recent standards. And there's a declaration under the law that says that the Secretary of State must decertify as a matter of law if we're not using the most recent standards, because we codified those standards. Well, that's the correct interpretation, it's the plain text interpretation, but this is what Alex Curtis said. Curtis said, "Election officials also are planning to ask the Democratic-controlled legislature to add language to state law clarifying that these county canvas boards are there to do whatever they say." Meaning, they threaten you all, they try to intimidate you all. And by the way, we know the law really doesn't say what we're saying, it does, but we're going to make sure that the legislature changes the wording to really tell you that your power is merely ministerial or symbolic. To which I would ask in return, if it's ministerial or symbolic, why belabor you all with the vote? Put the pressure on you to certify something when you have no power? So before I turn it over, I want to show you something. This is the work here of our team. This is a 500-page assessment report that follows our 161-page report that we provided, free of charge, that showcases that this is not the safest and most secure election, and we've got major, major problems. So let's talk about those problems, because we're going to have many, many people speak. But I want to tell you about some of the qualifications, because we have some members of the press from The Washington Post, CNN, our prized journalists out there, that question the qualifications, and we've had to keep the identity of many folks secret, because they get threats, they get intimidated. They have a congressional oversight committee that comes in to threaten people and try to subpoena records to shut this thing down. So fearful of the truth. So you're going to hear from Cynthia Butler, my wife will formally introduce her. One of the contributors to support is Dr. Doherty, a Harvard graduate. Jeffrey Lenberg, which we've heard from before, a nation-state vulnerability expert. Caleb Nikoff, who has a Bachelor of Mechanical Engineering, a Master's in Electrical Engineering, 11 years as a data analyst, technical consultant. Lisa Draza Smith, who's a control system engineer with two master's degrees, just finished her doctorate, and she worked at the Sandia National Labs focusing on cyber and grid security. Dan Sudden, 48 years' experience in this realm that we're going to talk about. Matt Weincheck, Jeff Young, so many folks, degree after degree. And we have a volunteer force here in Otero County, many of you are here, all of which provided this report free of charge. And we've been working on it for over a year, so we want to just thank you for allowing us this opportunity. But I'm going to hear, we're going to hear from our first expert. I'll introduce him one more time, because we are live streaming this, and that's Mr. Jeffrey Lenberg. Mr. Lenberg holds Bachelors and Master's degrees in Electrical Engineering. Mr. Lenberg is a security and vulnerability expert. He had a 31-year career at Sandia National Labs with 17 years in vulnerability assessments of high-valued U.S. systems, from nuclear weapons to high-valued facilities around the world. Mr. Lenberg was tasked by the federal government with finding vulnerabilities and determining how they could be fixed, patched, or blocked before bad actors could cause harm to U.S. assets and undermine national security. He is also one of the most knowledgeable election equipment experts in the country and has significant experience with investigations of election fraud going back quite some time. Mr. Lenberg was involved in the in-depth examination of election equipment in Ansham County, Michigan, Maricopa County, as well as Otero County. With that, please welcome Mr. Jeff Lenberg. Give me just a second to get situated here. Thank you for the warm welcome. Can you hear me okay? Okay. This will follow right on with what David just said, and that is, I recently heard of this book, actually Joel Oatman mentioned it, called The Doctrine of Lesser Magistrates. And the subtitle, "A Proper Resistance to Tyranny and a Repudiation of Unlimited Obedience to Civil Government." The reason this is really important, and I recommend this to all of you out there, I struggle probably with many of you, when you get an authority that gives you an order, we feel like we have to do it no matter what. Well, what if it's an illegal order? What if it's, you know, contrary to what God has said? We struggle with that, and this book actually explains in great detail historically and biblically what we're supposed to do. And so it's interesting, because it really is talking about this situation here. You folks here, the commissioners, would be considered lesser magistrates. And in our country, the truth is, since we have no king, we, the people, are all lesser magistrates. It's up to us, it's not up to, you know, someone in Washington or someone at the state level. We are all lesser magistrates. So I've got a couple quotes here from this book. "When tyranny presents itself, almost never do all the lesser magistrates stand and resist, whether oppression and tyranny comes from the higher magistrate or from other lesser magistrates. Even when some lesser magistrates take a stand, usually the majority will go along with the tyranny. This is how things always go, when good becomes evil and evil becomes good in a nation. Most go along to get along. That is what sustained Hitler's Germany and Stalin's Russia." Folks, we don't want to be them, we don't want to repeat that, okay? But it's exactly what we see going on right now in our country. "The people's hope is that lesser magistrates everywhere will understand their God-given right and duty to interpose, stand in the gap when oppression and tyranny raises its ugly head. The people must then rally around those lesser magistrates who actually do stand," which is, I know many of you folks are doing that. So I just wanted to really applaud you commissioners, because you're one of the few counties that's actually taken action to look into things. Most counties have just looked the other way, even though many, many of them knew things were not right. Things didn't smell right, there's all kinds of red flags, but most of them have not taken any kind of action to look into it to clear the air, just to make sure things were good, and you guys have done that, and I applaud you for it. It takes some courage, and I know you've gotten some grief for it, so I appreciate you doing that. Tonight, I really do want to thank you for allowing me to speak to you, and I'm going to present a bunch of information that has been collected over a year, all has to do with the voting machines, the same company that you have here. And it hasn't, the bulk of it hasn't been shared anywhere. So you'll be the first to hear a bunch of this information, okay? By the way, I want to just encourage anybody that has questions to please write them down. I understand there'll be a question and answer session after all the presentations, and I'll be happy to stay as late as anybody wants, talk to you individually or, you know, after the formal Q and A, but I'll talk to anybody that wants to talk about it, okay? Now, you can probably tell this is very uncomfortable for me, this is not my normal thing. I would just like to, though, really set the stage a little bit for you. I think it's important you understand a little bit about how I got here. First of all, I'm a very, I consider myself a very imperfect representative of the God that created the universe, okay? He's a God of truth, and I'm just here tonight trying to do what I believe He's called me to do. I believe He's equipped me and He's tasked me over the last couple of years, even before the election, started out in August 2020. This is not something I would have selected for myself, okay? In fact, it's not something I'd select for anybody else, and you'll understand why once I get into this briefing a little bit further. But I believe that God has made us for His purposes, and that my objective in life is to find out what those are and then be obedient to that, whatever they are, and whatever the consequences are, whether they're good or seemingly bad, I need to do that. I trust that He knows what He's doing, and so I knew this day would come sooner or later, I'm here tonight. So I just want to share with you a scripture, a verse, that actually is what kicked this all off for me. It's something that God put in my mind a long time ago. David mentioned that I had been involved in previous election fraud investigation, and I had. And I got this verse at that time, but God didn't lead me to really act on it. But I saw very specific fraud occur, I'm talking about decades ago. And it clearly came out like a year later that the election should have been rerun, but it wasn't, okay? In this verse, in particular verse 27, "What I tell you in the darkness, speak in the light, and what you hear whispered in your ear proclaim upon the housetops." A more specific, literal translation of that I have at the very bottom, and that is, "What Christ has revealed to me, in obscurity I am to make understandable and proclaim it from a large platform." That might be tonight, I don't know, but I'm here because I feel like God wanted me to be here and share this with you. By the way, it's gonna, this is a seemingly impossible task that I have tonight to really communicate what I've learned about these machines over the last, really it was a year, more than a year, about a year and a half, that I was almost full-time working on this all across the country in different locations. But, so, I really need help to do that, and I want you to be able to see a little bit of what I saw. Try to paint the picture of what I saw, and all the red flags and so on, and put that together for you so you got a feeling for what we're really talking about here. And it all ties back to Otero, because we're talking about the same equipment here. I want you to know, because I am a follower of the God of the universe and follower of Christ, that I pledge to tell you the truth as best as I know it, okay? So I'm not making anything up, I'm not after anybody's agenda. I'm just trying to find out, from the beginning, trying to find out what happened, and that's all it was. Just find out what happened, because every American needs to know and have confidence in our elected election system. If we can't have confidence in it, we're in really, really bad shape, and right now, he shared the percentages, we're in bad shape, because the bulk of the country does not trust our system right now. So I think God led me to do it to try to find out, one way or the other, were things going on or not, in particular having to do with the voting machines. And I'll tell you early on, when I started in this, that I didn't really think, I didn't even consider the voting machines. I was doing vulnerability assessment on the processes and not the machines. That shifted later, and you'll see that. I already mentioned, I don't really think I'm up to the task tonight, so if it's okay with you, I'm going to ask some of you in the audience to pray silently with me, and I'm going to pray, just briefly, Psalm 19, verse 14, some of you know it. So, "Lord, I just pray that you'd let the words of my mouth and the meditation of my heart be acceptable in your sight, oh Lord, my rock and my redeemer. And Lord, I do pledge to just share the truth as best as I can." And I need your help to do that, and so I ask you for it, in Christ's name. Amen. Okay, so let's move on and get into this. So what we're talking about tonight, this is an audit that you guys called for. Well, what do auditors do? This is a quote from Larry Corella. He says, some of you may have seen this quote, it went viral. "Before I became a novelist, I was an accountant. In auditing, you look for red flags, that's weird bits in the data that suggest something shifty is going on. You flag those weird things so you can delve into them further. One flag doesn't necessarily mean there's fraud, weird things happen. A few flags mean stupidity or dishonesty. But a giant pile of red flags means that there's bad shit going on and people should be in jail." Excuse my language. Here's another thing you learn about auditing. The more chaotic the system, the more chances for fraud. So when you come across a system that is extra chaotic on purpose, that tells you that the people running it want it that way for a reason, so keep that in mind as well. We're going to be looking at red flags, okay? So whenever I ask a question like, "Why would you do this this way?" or "Why would that happen?", just think red flag. And we're going to build a pile of red flags as I go through these different things that I tell you about, okay? And by the way, the reason you need to look at red flags is that, you know, on the surface, things will always add up. I mean, bad actors aren't stupid, they aren't going to just put it out there and make it obvious, okay? They're going to hide what they're doing. So when an auditor audits a bank, they don't go in and say, "Okay, what's your bank account balance? Well, the whole bank is, you know, $110 million." Okay, we go count, yep, there's $110 million in the bank, we're done. That's not what they do. What they do is they delve into all the details. They want to know, is it in the right accounts? Did things go in and out when they shouldn't have? A whole bunch of different things they're looking at when they audit that bank, and not just, did the overall balance come out correct? And so that's what we're talking about. We have to look at the pile of red flags, because they make it really hard for us to get directly at the evidence, and you'll see that. So, let's see, David already mentioned my background. I would just say one thing and repeat it, and that is that, you know, this vulnerability assessment background that I have, where I was responsible for determining vulnerabilities of literally our nuclear weapons, okay? That required the very highest clearances, as you can imagine, that you can possibly have. And I think that means you can probably trust me to take a look at your voting equipment, okay? There are people in the state of Michigan right now that are in the process of trying to get a special prosecutor because of the work that expert witnesses like me did up there. Apparently, they can't trust us, but I'd suggest that you probably can trust us, at least with the background that I have there. Okay, so let's look at this. What I look into is nation-state sort of vulnerabilities. Now, some of you may have already heard the levels of definition of, that I talk about when I talk about fraud. Level one is basically individuals. You get four or five ballots somewhere or another, and you fill them all out, and you deposit them in a ballot box somewhere, okay? That's voter fraud. That's all most people talk about, is voter fraud. Then I changed the wording, I changed it to election fraud. And that's where someone within the system systematically does things. So this is a poll worker, this is a, you know, a third-party contractor, this is, you know, someone that does something to the system. It might be someone that shows up on Election Day and puts in a stick and changes the programming on the system, which is completely illegal, and yet it went on in this country, okay? It might be someone we saw in Georgia, who, actually in Michigan, there was testimony of a person that ran thousands of ballots over and over and over. The same ballots thousands of times over, the same batch. That is what I call level two, where someone witting in the system is corrupted, and they go ahead and do bad things, like run batches many times, the same batch. Or they get a big box of ballots prepared for them from the outside and back it up and run it through, you know, through the system. So that's number two. Number three is what I focus on, which is the underlying machines. And the issue there is, a nation-state has capabilities that the average person doesn't have. To be able to access computers and networks and, you know, disassemble firmware, software, put very sneaky subversions in. I can tell you right now from experience that if you have a, one of our bosses, kind of a, I won't name him, but he's well-known across the country, used to say, you know, that he could put a subversion into 1,000 lines of code, and you won't find it. And yet, we're trusting companies who say they've inspected a million lines of code, and they, "Oh, there's nothing in there, it's good." I want to tell you, as an expert, that's impossible, okay? Stuff can be hidden in there, and you won't find it. You could take 100 people and look at it for 10 years, doing inspections, and you won't find it, if it's a nation-state actor. That's the stuff I'm concerned about, okay? So let's talk about the top goals that a nation-state actor would have, that bad actor would have. The very top one is kind of obvious, which is, they would want to subvert our nuclear weapons and make them so that we can't use them. Because that's the major deterrent we have worldwide. Someone may get a bigger force than us of non-nuke weapons, but we can always say, "Look, if you do something bad, we're going to unleash some nukes on you, okay?" Well, if they can disable the nukes, then we're in big trouble, all right? So that's number one, but what people don't think about is what I would put as number two, which is, subvert the U.S. election system. If I'm a bad actor, another country or some high-level people in the world who act as nation-states, that would be my next objective. And the reason why is, you can take over a country with a war, which is very messy, but with an election system, you can take over a country without firing a shot. If you control the election system, you just put whoever you want in office, and then you're done. You take the country that way. So that would be the way I look at it, the top goals, if I'm the bad actor, is those two things. And I'll just give you the punchline, and that is, my assessment after this year, and I will show you some reason why here, is that our election system's security is almost nonexistent. There's a facade of security that's been built, but it's the systems and the processes that exist are like Swiss cheese, and I'll explain why as I give some examples and as I go through this. We spend, you know, billions of dollars protecting our nuclear weapons, and yet we spend almost nothing protecting our election system. The main company that certified the bulk of the machines in the country, Pro V and V, that certified the Dominion machines, I was trying to research them. Best I can tell, they have less than a handful of employees, and one listing I showed, I looked at, showed they had $200,000 in revenue. Do you think they did a very thorough vulnerability assessment, or they really went through the code? code, you know, hundreds of thousands of lines of code, and would be able to find any kind of nation-state attack? Absolutely not, okay? We just don't do a good job of it. There's a facade of it, but it's not really there. So I'm going to build for us a pile of red flags. So you'll see me keep putting this pile up, but the first one that we really saw, and this was a little bit surprising to me, but anywhere we went in the country, you would think people would want to assist in clearing the error, and let's see if there was something here. But no, essentially everywhere we've gone, we got full-frontal massive resistance against looking into anything, okay? You guys are the exception. You've actually allowed us to do some stuff. But even then, we weren't allowed to do real forensics on your EMS, and so even that got blocked here. And that's one of the reasons why I'm going to give you a lot of examples on the same equipment from elsewhere, because we didn't get to do much here. But I do have some findings from your system, from, fortunately, the ladies let me look over their shoulder for a few minutes, and I could tell just with a few minutes' look that there were some significant issues there. And we'll talk about those. Okay. Before we do, I want to explain something to you about this resistance that's weird. I mean, it's just, uh-oh, what did I just do? Give me a second, guys, get my screen back.
Security.
No, yes, security. Actually, I touched the right, I was grabbed the side of the computer and the wrong thing happened there, so. That's where the button is. I got it. Okay. Okay. So, I'll say this just real quickly, I'm not going to go through all this in detail, but basically, the federal government, DHS, has said that yours truly, me, is the greatest threat to homeland security, okay? Because they would claim that I'm putting out a narrative that's contrary to the official government narrative, and questioning, even questioning the election is, makes me the top priority. I do want to take a minute and talk about the state of Michigan, and what they've done to us. So you may know I spent months up in Michigan, you may not, but working on a legal case up there in Antrim, you've all heard of Antrim probably, as an expert witness. And Republican-controlled Senate refused to hear our expert witness testimony. Then the Senate issued a report saying we have seen no evidence. Then the Senate report called for the state attorney general to investigate anyone that disagreed with their assessment that the election was fine, which they actually focused on Antrim in that report. The attorney general then announced that she would be doing that, this was back in June of 2021, and as of last Friday, she has asked for a special prosecutor to investigate the team in an open case, the case has not been closed, you've heard in the media that it's been closed, it's on appeal to the Supreme Court in Michigan. It's not been closed, but she's asked for a special prosecutor to be appointed to bring criminal charges against Matt DiPerno and his team, and I'm specifically named in there as someone that, after their investigation, they decided we should be criminally charged. So that's the kind of pushback and fear tactics that we're getting. God's encouragement is, you know, don't fear, don't dread. Okay. So moving on, let's get into this. Okay, there's quite a bit I'm going to talk about on New Mexico, and not all of it's in Otero County. But I will just say, early in August 2020, God led me to get involved with this, looking into what might happen in the election, doing vulnerability assessments and so on. Aaron's going to talk about Eric and the New Mexico DMV and so on, so I'm not going to talk about that. What I will tell you is that, one thing that we determined in the data was, there were unusually low turnouts from Republicans, and unusually high for Democrats. And it was consistent over elections. And it was just odd that that was that way. And then, associated with that, and again, Aaron's going to go into details, but both in Otero County and in Maricopa County, they did canvassing of individuals, they went out into neighborhoods. And what they discovered in both places was that there were people, numbers of people, significant numbers, who said they voted, and yet, the vote, the history, the voter history for them said they didn't vote, okay? So that's a red flag, folks. That's a red flag. We'll put it on the list. The second thing that occurred, this is all chronological, the election occurred, we were watching it very closely, Election Night and so on, we were watching it before, we were particularly concerned about early voting, and one of the things we saw, in Burnley County specifically, was that we had a, reported from the state, through the parties and so on, we had a number of early voters that had voted in Burnley County. And then when we got the results after Election Night on those early voting machines, the number had gone up by 16,000, out of about 150,000. So that's a significant red flag, okay? Also, we found the tapes, we were gathering up all the tapes on Election Night, we went down to the voting machine warehouse, and they had posted all of the early voting machine tapes on the outside of the warehouse, we took pictures of it, we analyzed all that, and a significant number of those tapes were missing. And we're talking about Friday after the election, but the tapes weren't there. And for the, we finally did get them many, many weeks later. But one other thing about these tapes, guys, is that these early voting machines, there was one signature on all of the tapes. And it was like, out of 50-some voting machines, there were like, two or three signatures. So these people were county workers, I don't know, they just went around and closed all the machines. Now, what you've got to keep in mind, that these machines, they opened the polls weeks before the election, right? Then they stopped early voting on Saturday night, they leave the polls open, they don't close it, they just lock the machine and they move it, hopefully to the warehouse, and then on Election Night, they close the polls. So for a couple days, if you're a bad actor, and you can get access to those machines, I can tell you the lock is about a 60-second lock to get through, and you can add as many ballots as you want. We did calculations, you know, a single person could add tens of thousands of ballots easily in that timeframe, on those machines. So that's a problem, that's a red flag, okay? This next one is what really kicked me off on a deeper dive into all of this, and it was surprising. I won't go into all the details, but I will just tell you that a small team of us, and a couple guys smarter than me, okay, I'm not that smart, but I know some really smart guys, looked at this, and multiple people verified it. In the New Mexico registration database, there was marking going on, or tagging, some of the guys call it, tagging or marking, of in the voter record. And what you see on the screen here is percentages for each one of the elections. And we looked at it, and we did investigations to see any reason why that should be there, and we couldn't come up with any valid reason for them being marked differently. It appears that the database here in New Mexico, going back to 1990, has been instrumented, and I won't go into the details, we did more analysis, it does seem to show a shift, but we don't have time to go into the gory detail. So the markings versus the non-markings are not distributed the same, okay? They're distributed in favor of one party, all right? So that's another red flag. Okay. So then, the recount occurred, and this is where Otero's going to come back in again. So there was a recount of some races across the state that were triggered. One of them was in Luna County, and I talked to the election supervisor there at the time. And what was interesting was, what they did was, she said they sent in some people to put new programming on the machine, and, because they were only allowed to recount that one race. They couldn't recount anything else but that one race. Therefore, they brought in a new programming stick and reprogrammed the machine for that recount. Now, that may be standard procedure in New Mexico, but that's a huge red flag. Why wouldn't you just use the same programming? Who cares if you count all the ballots? You're running them through the machine anyway. It's just a good double-check to look and see, the second time you run them, did it all come out right? Okay, you don't have to look at the rest of the answers, I mean, we're talking about a piece of tape, paper tape that comes out. So it makes no sense at all to reprogram the machines, and as a bad actor, that's a great thing, because I can reprogram the machines to make them do anything I want, if I've gotten in and subverted the system. So doing recounts that way doesn't make sense. In Otero, we had come down here, I don't know if Robin remembers this, but there was a request that we made when we were here, which was, hey, can you just run the test ballots through the machine more than once? Would you do it twice for us? And the answer was, no, that was illegal, we couldn't do that. The reason I wanted to do that is, in our data, we previously looked at it and said, you know, we think there's a trigger level to pass logic and accuracy testing, that if you stay below the trigger level, you don't enable the subversion, but if you go over the trigger level, then you do. So you just got to keep it under. So isn't it interesting that in our state law, it actually says exactly, a calculation, a formula, on exactly how many ballots you can run, or, excuse me, that you can score for the logic and accuracy test? And in Otero, I think it ended up being 125 ballots, or something like that, for that recount. And so, we made a request and said, gee, can you run them twice, just double the answer? You know, and the answer, I think, coming back from the Secretary of State, I think you guys might have made a call, was, no, you can't do that. Well, I looked at the law. The law actually doesn't say that. It limits how many you can score, it actually does not limit how many you can run, okay? Doesn't limit it. So we could have actually run those. Immediately, that same timeframe, that same recount, is partly in Otero, partly in Doñana County, we went to Doñana and said, okay, they're behind, they're bigger, they were having trouble getting organized, and their numbers were bigger. So we ran the calculation and said, okay, it's going to be 235 ballots. I said, you know, I think that's high enough to trigger where I think I see a trigger level in the data. And so, so we went over there, and we made the request, and the answer was, oh, no, no, no. In the state law, it says, I can break it up over three tabulators if I want. So we said, gee, can't you just run them all, at least one of them, run all of them through? Oh, no, no, no. They ran 75, or whatever, you know, 235 divided by 3, whatever it was, and that's what they ran through each one. So it's just a red flag. I'm not saying that that proves anything, I'm just saying it's another red flag. Why would you not take one and run it, just to see? But no, the law says something otherwise. It allowed them to do it. They didn't have to do that, but it allowed them to break it up, and that's what they chose to do, okay? So that's another red flag. So then, around this timeframe, I went to Pennsylvania, it looked like we were going to get to do a recount. What happened there, very simply, was that, all of a sudden, the county had agreed on it, the supervisors or whatever, and the election supervisor went on vacation for two weeks. Yeah, in the most hotly challenged election ever, the election supervisor disappeared for two weeks. I don't know that we ever got to count that county, I moved on. Another red flag. Back to Burnley County. So in Burnley County, we finally got a chance, December 15th, you may remember that date, that's when votes are reported out nationally, from, you know, you have to have them canvassed and report them out to Congress by that time. So, December 15th, we actually got a group of people into Burnley County's warehouse to count the ballots. And we started about noon, I was not there, I was remote, but I was tied in with our guys via phone. And we actually had six people, we had three teams, or two teams of three, counting the ballots, because they, we weren't allowed to have, you know, video of it, of the ballots, any of that kind of stuff. So we had two teams of three counting the same ballots, to make sure we got it right. Well, in there, we discovered that on one of the tabulators, and we only got to run about four of them, Election Day tabulators, one of them was off, not just Trump, but also the House race that we looked at, was off where the Republican candidate lost votes and the Democratic candidate gained votes, okay? So that was a little bit of a surprise. It, again, red flag, something that doesn't seem quite right. It comes out to about 2.6% of the vote, and if you remember, turnout was really low, so most of the machines had really low votes on it. So this was one of the ones that had a few more, that maybe hit a trigger level, and began to do something. Now, here's what was really strange, and I want you to pay close attention to this, is that one of the ballot boxes, and they were per tabulator, had nine extra ballots in it. And everybody was scratching their head, including the county election workers, they're going, we don't understand what this means. We have the paperwork, it says this many ballots are supposed to be in this ballot box, it's locked, it's sealed, they opened it up, it's got nine extra ballots in it. Turns out, those nine extra ballots, when they did the overall count, eight were for the Democratic candidate, and one for the Republican candidate, both in the presidential race and in the House of Representatives race. Huh. Why would those be in there, and they were for the Democratic candidate versus the Republican? Well, maybe here's why. We had previously found a 2018 audit in the Mexico governor's race, where it showed that the Republican candidate had lost votes, but the Democratic candidate had, excuse me, the Republican candidate lost votes, and then it showed that, oh, so did the Democratic candidate lost votes. Actually, the hand count, they got more, they both got more in the hand count than on the machines, the original machine count. Huh. So what did the auditor say, or what's in their audit? Well, these cancel out, so clearly this is a human mistake. This is human error, because, you know, if you're going to cheat, you're not going to cheat both ways, obviously, right? Well, what if a bad actor just goes around in some of the ballot boxes and sticks a few ballots in for the other candidates? So if it does get audited, you get this coming out like this. Oh, they canceled. Well, if you're doing an audit, you don't cancel the errors, you add the errors, no matter what direction it's in, that you don't cancel an error, those are errors, they should be exactly correct, and you need to go find out why they aren't exactly correct, not say, oh, they cancel out, so nothing to see here, let's move on. But that's what they did, and I think Aaron found that same kind of thing. And oh, by the way, the two percentages in 2018 and in 2020 were pretty close to the same percentage, off. Interesting, red flag. Move on. Now, this one's even more, I think, significant, which is, we, our team finally got to count some absentee ballots. They were told that they were going to have, be allowed 24 people for five days. We had all the people, had it all lined up, planned on counting all 140,000 absentee ballots in Burnley County. We were going to get it done. Showed up on Monday, the, a judge ruled on Monday, after we ruled in we could do stuff, said because COVID-19 was wrapping, ramping, that she would only allow one day and only six people. Period. Hmm. Well, that's interesting. So our guys counted, our teams did the count, the two teams of three, we got numbers, but they managed to count well over a complete pallet's worth, okay? Meanwhile, one of, I think it was the election workers there, managed to get a photograph, a picture of the absentee ballots. So they were all on pallets, they weren't in ballot boxes, on pallets, shrink-wrapped, and they were behind a chain-link fence, inside the warehouse, locked, chain-link fence. They got a very good picture of it, so we could tell how many pallets were there. So based on the one that we counted, we went ahead and did, because there were 25 in each tray and so on, it was well-organized, okay? The number of them should have been pretty repeatable. So we did an estimate, and lo and behold, approximately 40,000 ballots appear to not be there. Hmm. So then you look at some of these machines, and you'll notice on this, this slide here, that there were four machines, 2790, 2791, 2792, 2793. I'll just say, those four may have been run first, and then possibly the other two were added on. And I can tell you from, I'm not going to go into the details, but looking at the numbers, it could be that they took 2792, not one of the other twos, they don't work, but they could have taken 2792 and run the same ballots through those two other machines. And it adds up to almost exactly 40,000 ballots, the number that we had already independently estimated. So, red flag. I'm not saying that, that means that that actually occurred. All I'm saying is, there's a red flag. Someone needs to check this stuff. Where are those ballots? Maybe by their, by now, they're there, I don't know, but they didn't appear to be when, when we got to look at it. Okay. Moving on. In early January, most of you know that Georgia did a full state manual recount. Now, what you may not know is most states have something they call a manual recount, but it's not a manual recount. Okay? It says manual recount, state of Michigan, for example, ran a full state manual recount. Not. What they did is, what's in the law in most places for a manual recount is you count a limited number of ballots, like here, maybe 100, like Otero's is a manual recount, because they counted 100 ballots or 125 ballots, checked them out to make sure they agreed with the machine, you know, put them through, close it out, check the numbers, and then you run all the ballots through the machines again, the same ones that were used on election night. So most of these states who said they did a manual recount, didn't do a manual recount, they did a machine recount. That's what most of the states did. Georgia, however, did a statewide manual recount, the only one that I know of. And they brought in a company called Voting Works, who had, I won't go into all the details, but I will just tell you that Voting Works is a nonprofit funded by George Soros and a number of other big tech guys, Apple, Google, Facebook, those guys funded it. Okay? And basically, the idea is to do risk limiting audits. So I want to take a minute and talk about risk limiting audits, even though what they did was 100% recount, and a typical risk limiting audit is much, much smaller. Okay? But they used it in, in several states. In fact, it had been approved supposedly by the DHS to be used in Georgia, had agreed to it, Michigan had agreed to it, Pennsylvania had agreed to it. So there were several states that were signed up with Voting Works. So the idea is that you log in, the county logs in, the various counties log into a computer, so does the state, Secretary of State, and then this machine tells you which ballots to go check. They check them through their mathematical formulas, and they say, yep, it's looking good, or no, we need to go check some more ballots. Okay? Now, the reason risk limiting audits, in my opinion, do not work. Okay? They do not work, folks. They're being pushed all over the country and touted as how we're doing audits and securing things. Here's why. When you put your ballots into a ballot box, and this is true here, or tabulator, it goes into a big ballot bin. You've all seen it, the big black bins. There's no way those ballots are in order. The risk limiting audit tells you to go get ballot number 11 out of that stack. You can't. Then it says, go get ballot number 20. You don't know which one is ballot number 20. So they have an electronic record, and they want to count that specific ballot against that record. But you can't. So what they do is they say, we don't have to solve that. Just take all the ballots and run them through some tabulators and get a new cast vote record. And then take one here and one there and go check them and see if they agree. So you're running the same ballots, but through a different tabulator with different programming much later, after the election. All you're doing is proving on that day that for those few ballots that you pulled out, they actually matched the CVR. But it has no relation to what actually happened on election night or during early voting. It's unrelated. It's a facade, folks. Risk limiting audits are a facade the way they're being done. That's my opinion. That's my expert opinion. They don't make sense. The next one. Georgia, by the way, the entire state is using these Dominion machines, tabulators. Okay? Most of the counties use the same ones you guys do, low speed tabulators, not high speed, though some of them have high speed tabulators. But anyway, so we had heard that the big concern from many of the decision makers in Washington was, well, how did Georgia come out with such a clean manual recount? Okay? So I couldn't answer that. So I went down to Georgia to see if I could figure it out. And I picked out a county that looked kind of fishy in the numbers, down in southern Georgia, called Liberty County. Went in, talked to the election folks there, they were helpful, they were nice, ended up getting all of copies of their paper tapes, of all their tally sheets, all their batch sheets from the recount. Okay? I'm not going to go through all the numbers on the screen, but I'll tell you that you can see the one that's highlighted. There is 1,000 ballot difference. Okay? So from, this is all their own documentation. So the paper tapes say there were a certain number of ballots, but the ballots that they had and counted was 1,000 less. So the machines had 1,000 votes on them for which they had no ballots. But, lo and behold, what happens? The day after the manual recount finished, someone from the Secretary of State's office in Georgia showed up, said, hey, we need to talk with you, something doesn't look quite right. By the end of the day, everything was fine. And the election worker told me, well, they just told me that I must have entered the same batch results several times. And then what got reported out at the top level was, it's all correct. Okay? So you go look at their spreadsheet, the, the state spreadsheet, and it says, no problem in Liberty, guy's just off by 1,000 ballots. It's off by four and a half percent. Okay? But the Secretary of State of Georgia says, no problem with the manual recount. He also told us that, hey, anybody who wants to, the documentation's all out online, you can get it and you can check it yourself. Well, guess what? We had some folks, ladies, that did that. Four retired ladies did that. Okay? It turns out, there are 13,507 batch sheets out of 42,921 that don't exist on the state When I went to Liberty, the first thing they told me is, hey, you can get that documentation off the state. I said, actually, I already went and looked, there's 23 batch sheets. And in Liberty, they had 250 some batch sheets. There were 23 on the website. Okay? This is a huge red flag. I don't believe the recount in Georgia was as clean as, as we were told. So let's move to Antrim, Michigan. Okay? So I spent months in Michigan as an expert witness, working on a legal case. I already mentioned, it's still open on appeal. We were provided with a forensic image of an EMS that our team put into a virtual machine so we could actually run it. We were provided with a tabulator, Dominion tabulator, so we could actually run tests with ballots. We made ballots through a couple of different means so that we could run tests. We created some ballots. And we spent countless hours examining the tabulator programming files, the election management system for vulnerabilities. We wrote 20 expert witness reports. I think 10 or 11 of them have me as the author. They're still available on depurnalaw.com website. You can go see them. Most people have not heard of them. But we documented what we were finding in our forensic work up there and the testing that we were doing. So there's several different expert witnesses, and oh, by the way, we're all the ones now that the special, that she's trying to get a special prosecutor to prosecute us for being expert witnesses in that case. Okay? That's what she's asking for right now. By the way, those reports are very detailed, but each one does have an executive summary. So you could go read if you want, just the executive summary. So what are some of the things that we found in Antrim that will couple back here to Otero and to New Mexico? One of the things we found was that the technician password in Antrim was 123456. I heard some laughing out there, because they know that, guess what the password is for New Mexico? 123456. Now, it turns out, what you can do with the technician password, you may not be aware, you can reopen a poll, you can re-zero a poll, as well as open and close a poll, you can do all of that. You can access all of the administrative menus. And the reason that's important is if you read one of those expert reports, you'll find out in there that I documented a feature that should not exist in the machine, but is in there, which is, you can go in days if you want after the election and open the poll again, add ballots, go down into a sub-sub-sub-menu, adjust the time, print it out, and you cannot tell the difference between that tape, that paper tape, and the election night one, other than the fact that the vote tally is different. Okay? So there's a report that actually shows four different paper tapes from the same machine with the exact same times on it, open poll time, close poll time, and it has four different answers. Okay? Now, why is that a problem? Well, that's how you do the canvas. You don't go back out and recount the paper ballots, right? What you do is you take the paper tapes, put them in a spreadsheet, and see if it matches the electronic votes that flowed through the system. Right? So if you can modify the paper tape, well, and you know you can do that after the fact, well, then on election night, throw in some extra votes. Then you can go back later and, you know, add them in and print it out, and if anybody ever needs the paper tape, you've got it. And it matches with whatever votes you threw in. Big red flag. That capability should not exist in the system, but it's in there, and it's documented. Another thing that's on your system and that we found in Antrim, and oh, by the way, we found in Maricopa also, is the Microsoft SQL Server Management Suite 17 software. Okay? Folks, I cannot find in any of the certification paperwork, and the paperwork is very detailed on the software packages that are part of the certification. It's not there. And it's not needed to run their software. And it's on, it's in, it's in Michigan, it's in New Mexico, it's in Arizona. It does not need to be there. Okay? Now, why is that a problem? The problem is, in the places, and I've had software for all three places, you can access this tool without any password. Once you've accessed this tool, you now have the keys to the kingdom. You literally have the keys to the kingdom. You can go in and change the passwords for all the Dominion software to whatever you want, and then later on, turn it, change it back to what they were. You never need to know what they were. You just go in, grab them, save it, change it, make the password XYZ, and then when you're done doing whatever you're doing, put it back the way it was, and no one will know. So you can access, change the passwords and access it, but even more so, the Dominion software and system is very much database based. So all of the information is in the database. And with this tool, you can do anything you want to that data. You can change it any which way you want, very quickly. And if you've seen the video that was made back in May of 2021 where I showed flipping of votes, some of you have seen that, you know, I did that. I went in and ran one SQL line using that tool, and I modified the votes in the EMS. I swapped them around. By just running one line, it took me about 10 seconds to do it. So you get remote access, doesn't take a password, you can go in and change votes any which way you want, and then you can, basically, you do anything you want to the system. This is a flaw that should not exist. Now, this one here, I think, is very, very important to understand, this next one, still in Michigan, but it relates to you guys as well, and that is that, you know, the explanation for the Antrim problem that they had, what they saw, they had their state expert come in, hold them in, and he said, well, the index shifted on them, and they wanted to blame the county workers, and in fact, that's what, what happened, is the county workers were blamed for the Antrim problem. My expert opinion is, the county was not to blame for it. The third party was to blame for it completely. And here's why. Is number one, their software has the ability, according to their documentation, to make late cycle changes without affecting anything else, even after you have started the voting. They advertise that. The question is, red flag. Why didn't they use that feature? Why did they rebuild the entire thing and shift all of the numbers, all of the indexes, when they had a feature where they could have fixed it without shifting anything? That's a red flag. Okay? Secondly, is that software programming 101 is if you have two different things that to work correctly have to be aligned, you give them a version number. You know, the programming files going into the tabulator should have had a version number and the EMS a version number, and those two things should have been checked to see if they agree. And basically, it appears that they do know versioning. So the bottom line was, they had one version that was on the tabulators, and they had a different version because of the index compilation in the database on the EMS. And they turn around and they blame that on the county workers? No. Okay? They said, well, the county workers should have known that, and they should have gone out and reprogrammed everything. And even that, they're claiming that. I claim that the third party should have made sure, okay, they're supporting this election, should have made sure the county people knew that they had to go out and reprogram every one of those tabulators, if that was the case. They didn't do that. Okay? I don't think the county was to blame. I think it's the third party. Still on the findings from Antrim, because we found a lot of stuff up there. And, and, and that is, this Antrim shift that I mentioned, what it did essentially was end up throwing away votes. So because of the shift, there was a check, apparently, a check to see if this vote choice was in the correct race. And if it's in the correct race, you process it. And if it's not in the correct race, well, that's like data corruption problem, because by definition, it must be in that race, otherwise, how did it get voted in the first place? It has to be in that race. So if it's not in that race, and you do the check, and we verified that there is a check in the code, but what did they do? They didn't have the error handling for it. Error handling was missing. It just said, I guess I'll throw that vote away. So on election night in Antrim, 3,000 ballots worth of votes were thrown away. Okay? We're talking about 3,000, and then add up all the races, because what happened was, was Jorgensen's vote count shifted to Trump, Trump shifted to Biden, and Biden actually should have shifted to, to the straight party ticket, which was Rocky De La Fuente, but instead, they were just thrown away. That's a huge, huge red flag. By the way, I, I think I've mentioned this, but we've already demonstrated on the video that the machines can be subverted, and, but what you may not realize from that video is that you can subvert the machine, in fact, I can subvert the machine, in such a way that the paper tape matches the CVR, the electronic record. Okay? I don't have to do anything to the EMS. They match, and they disagree with the ballots. Okay? And because I can do it through only changing the election files, which come from a single source, there's an election designer software package for Dominion that they use all over the country. If I subvert that package, I could subvert every election in the country by subverting one piece of software. Okay? And when they roll out their update, I roll out the subversion, and now I basically own the elections for the entire country. All right? And the same is true with ESNS. They, they have the same kind of structure. That's a huge red flag. Okay? We're onto Maricopa, guys, we're almost there. Hang in there. So Maricopa was a mess, massive effort to try to, to do what was done there. The, the original plan was that it would be fully transparent, there was zero transparency. There was zero transparency, okay? So that was a huge problem. Now, this next one, a judge ruled that the ballots were secret and could not be recorded, because we planned on broadcasting all of the results, all of the ballots, the whole thing, in real time. And a judge ruled that they couldn't be. Now, this is a total misuse of secret ballot definition, and it happens all over the country, and this has got to be fixed, because this is the excuse for a lot of things, and it's wrong. The whole idea behind a secret ballot is so that when you vote at that point, no one gets to see how you voted. No one gets to find out unless you tell them how you voted. But as soon as you separate that ballot from that voter, the whole point of a secret ballot is you can't tell who the voter was. From then on, that ballot is not secret. That ballot is public information. That ballot should be immediately broadcast to the internet. But what do we do? We block observers out of rooms. You can't see the counting machines, and you can't see the ballots. Well, what? Well, they're secret. No, they're not secret. There's no voters in there when the high-speed scanning's going on. The whole thing, transparency needs to be where everything is videoed, everything is recorded, images are immediately shipped out to everybody. The only place you need to protect the secret ballot is at the polling locations when a voter is voting. After that, no, it should be 100% transparent, all right? That's a huge, huge problem, the way that secret ballot is misused. And a judge ordered that we could not show anybody the ballots because they were secret ballots. Well, that's wrong, okay? So there was no transparency. One last thing, the ballot box seals were all broken. So when the ballots got to the arena there, there was no really chain of custody left, because they'd all been opened up, except with one pallet that was completely sealed. That's a problem, okay? So Arizona, key findings from there, the, on the forensic side, is, and we've seen a little bit of this here in Otero, the EMS system was corrupted before we got there. Now, we don't know who corrupted it, because they actually brought in the two certified companies, ProVNV and SLI Compliance, to do a pre-audit before the Maricopa audit team from the Senate came in. By the way, they didn't find any of the stuff that we found. They didn't find corrupted files. So you've got to ask, why didn't they find the corrupted files that we found? There were 263,000 corrupted images, guys, out of 2.1 million, but they didn't mention that, okay? Hmm, that's pretty weird. Not only that, they've insisted this all over the country. If you want to run an audit, you've got to bring in a forensic audit. You can only bring in the certified people. Only two companies were certified. They're the same ones that certified the machines in the first place. Do you see a problem here? You don't bring in the CPA firm to audit itself, okay? You don't allow that. You have to have an independent auditor, because are they going to come in and say, "Hey, we screwed up? You know, we should have never certified this machine in the first place?" No, they're not going to do that. So I already mentioned ProVNV. I will tell you just one thing about SLI Compliance. It's just a red flag. They are owned by Gaming Lab International, which by one report has 90% of the gaming industry compliance worldwide. Okay, with labs all over the world, including in Macau, China, which one article pointed out is the gambling Las Vegas of China. It's six times bigger than Las Vegas, Nevada, okay? And they have a major test lab there. Now, why is this a problem? The problem is, these two companies, to do the certification, they have all the source code, they have all the hardware. Who do they have doing the certification? Who do they have looking at it? If I'm a bad guy, I want to work for one of those companies, because I get access to everything, okay? Maybe I ship it off to China, I don't know. I'm just saying it's a red flag that we ought to pay attention to. Someone should be checking that, because I don't like the idea that our software and hardware might be looked at by foreign nationals. But I don't think anybody's checking into that at all, the best I can tell, all right? That's a huge red flag. I already mentioned the 263,000 ballot images that were corrupted, which made it nearly impossible to check a whole bunch of things. I will mention that the ballot images that were corrupted, and this is a huge red flag, was after October 31st. So they've got all these high-speed scanners, there were nine of them, and they scanned 1.6 million ballots by the end of October 31st, okay? They had already scanned them with no image corruption. The image corruption didn't start until November 1st, and then after that, those same high-speed scanners had 263,000 corrupted images. Hmm, how is that possible? Okay, let me just point out another thing that's a huge problem. They ran those on the high-speed scanners. So you realize on Saturday night in Arizona and Maricopa, they already knew who won the election. Because if you know 1.6 million results out of 2.1 million, a mathematician will tell you what the answer is. You know how close you are. So for a bad guy like me, I go, "This is great. I projected I'm going to lose by 50,000." Okay, all I got to do is put 70,000 into the system so that I don't lose. This can't be allowed. This has to be stopped. That kind of nonsense cannot go on, but it's going on, okay? Just one last thing there on the Maricopa findings, and that is that this is another huge red flag. Adjudicated ballot store, every 200 ballots would go into it, serial number, serially given it to it, starting from 1 to 2.1 million. And the problem is, huh, the serial numbers go up 150,000 higher than 2.1 million. So what happened is around November 1st, someone had read in 150,000 ballots, and they took them back out. Now, why would you process 150,000 ballots and then remove them from the system in the middle of counting? I can't think of a good reason to do that, but that's what the database shows in Arizona. Okay, so Otero, finally, to some details here. The biggest thing that came out of yours was the demonstration, and I appreciate seeing this, because I didn't realize they could do it. But the fact that your, the model machine that you have here for the ADA compliance, you hook into the machine, and basically, the tabulator is also a printer, and it can actually fill in votes. That's how the ADA thing works. You do it on this thing, and it print, you put it in, it fills in the votes on the same type ballot that you've hand-filled in. It even fills them in to make them look like they were hand-filled in instead of machine-filled in. It reverses it. It can be checked by the person helping, the handicapped person or the ADA, the disabled person, and then you feed it in the same slot, and you tabulate it, okay? You would never, ever, ever put that capability into a tabulator. That's insane, okay? And the reason why is, just with a flip of software, I can take a down-ballot race, tons of down-ballot races don't get voted because people don't care. They vote the first four races, and they don't vote down-ballot. So having a machine that can see that, and then fill in votes for me where I didn't vote, that's insane. That capability should not be in a voting machine, and yet it's there, okay? Huge, huge problem. I already mentioned the SQL Server, the old files being removed. So what concerns me here is a quote that the ladies told me, that the third party said, "Oh, we're going to come in because we need to remove some old files, and we need to update some stuff on your machine." Hmm, well, there's two problems there. Is why are you removing old files? These are big machines, and there's not that much data on a small county like this. And oh, by the way, the old file they removed apparently included the 2020 project file. So apparently, the 2020 election was considered an old file that needed to be removed from the system. Big red flag, okay? That's not good at all, all right? So, and then update, I don't know what the update was, but I think someone should find out what the update was, because you're not supposed to run around updating the software that's certified, okay? So they shouldn't just come in and update your software. And of course, there were places in the country they were updating the software on election night. That absolutely should not be occurring, where you update the software in the middle of an election. But if you're going to update the software, you need to verify that it's certified, a certified update. Here's one more, and that is the fact that, the security logs. So again, they would like to blame the county folks for this, okay? The security logs, at least in Otero, were not downloaded. There's a checkbox to download them, okay? They weren't downloaded. Now, the security log has all of the events that occur on the machine for every ballot, open poll, closed poll. It has every event, very detailed. That's why it's the security log, all right? It's in text, it's put on the removable card, and it should be loaded into the EMS, and it's not loaded in. Now, I blame this on the company, not on the county. Why would you have a checkbox that could be turned on or off for a security log? A security log is a security log. It's not a big file. It should always be downloaded. It takes a few seconds extra to download it. Why in the world would you design software where you can just turn off the security log or turn off the images? That's a problem, okay? That button should not be there, that function should not be there. And I want to call out the certification companies, because they should tell the machine companies, "You're not allowed to do that." That's a huge vulnerability, okay? Another one, I'll just mention now, because I don't think I have it anywhere else, is modems, okay? In Michigan, we know they had modems, both in ESNS machines and Dominion machines. You should never allow a modem into a voting machine, period. They were connected through the internet, through a cellphone modem, okay? All you've got to do is get the credentials, which the county didn't have, but apparently the third party had, for that APN and the password, and you now have access to that machine from anywhere in the world. Isn't that a slight red flag? I mean, it shouldn't be allowed. You look at their certification documentation, they have lines on there for things that are electronic transfer and things that are manual transfer. In their certification documentation, it has a manual transfer from the tabulator to the EMS. It doesn't show a modem. And I could not find a modem in any of the certification hardware or software, and yet it's absolutely there. They should disqualify all of those machines that have that, okay? And finally, one thing you may not be aware of, but I noticed it's a detail, but it's an important detail for security. In Maricopa County, the images, in the images, where it does the, if you will, cast vote record, where it figures out in the actual vote, it puts a date and timestamp, a very detailed date and timestamp. You have the same machines that Maricopa has. None of your images have a date and timestamp in them. Why would you turn that off? Why would the programmers, not the county, why would the programmers turn that off? Why would you even be able to turn that off? You shouldn't be able to. Again, certification companies should say, "No, you shouldn't have the ability to program that out." And yet, it's not there. So for Maricopa, lots of red flags. And for Otero, we see some red flags as well there. So in summary, everybody says, "Please." Essentially, everywhere we went, we encountered massive resistance and very little assistance, with the exception of you guys have been somewhat cooperative, which is good, though I will say, we didn't really get to look at the EMS, and I know it's not your fault. Secretary of State said we can't, so that's a problem. But guys, you saw my pile of red flags here. I mean, everywhere we look, there are red flags. What did we say at the beginning? If there's a huge pile of red flags, you can pretty much sure, be assured there's a problem, a major problem. What that auditor would say is fraud, okay? This does not make the American voter confident. That's why we have to do something about it, otherwise, we're not going to trust our system. So recommendations, I'm going to give you three guiding principles, if I can. I've thought about this a lot. And one is, we really need to decentralize control. An example of that is what you guys have run into here. They passed a state law that says you must use a voting machine. You have no choice. They passed a state law that says it must be certified by the Secretary of State. And, oh, it must meet the EAC guidelines. And oh, by the way, then they passed a law that said only the Secretary of State can decertify a voting machine. So basically, they're controlling the elections at the state level. And with HR1 in Congress, they're trying to get to where they can control it nationally. And with EAC and their guidelines and standards, they're trying to get it national. It needs to be pushed down. You should be able to decide whether or not you want to use a voting machine. If you don't trust voting machines, you should be able to count paper ballots. Or here's an alternative. I prefer paper ballots, but why not get scanners? Just off-the-shelf scanners. Scan the images yourself. You saw, I mean, it took a few hours of training. We trained a group of people, did a very professional job at scanning the ballots. So get all your ballots, you know, secure them during the election, and then on election day, scan them all yourself, get the images, publish them transparently, immediately, before they're counted. That would be my suggestion. They go out to the internet after the polls are closed, after you've counted all those ballots on election night, you put them out to the world. Then there are companies that exist, guys, okay, that have already demonstrated in Louisiana and elsewhere, and actually, they've run yours as well recently, is they can scan your ballots and tell you the answer. So you hire a separate company. That's number two. Decouple the processes. This is insanity. We have one company, actually, two companies, that control the elections for the entire country. They design the software, they build the hardware, they make the ballots, they design the ballots, they program the election files, they support you during the election. They come in afterwards and do maintenance on the system. They have control, oh, they create the test ballots. They have control of the entire system from beginning to end. You've got to decouple the process. You can't have one entity, because as a bad guy, I love that, because all I got to do is subvert one place, and I can own the system, okay? Even if the companies are not involved. I'm not saying the companies may be doing this. It could be someone outside the company, and this is what I would do, is target that company. I would break into their servers, I would put my stuff in there, and they wouldn't know I was there, okay? So that's what I would do as a bad guy. We can't allow that. It has to be decoupled, okay? And then the last one is this transparency. I've already mentioned it several times, but it's got to be opened up. The only place that you need to be secret is when the people are voting. When they're voting on that ballot, it needs to be secret. Other than that, complete video coverage, recordings, audits, the whole thing. Everybody gets to see everything. Every ballot gets seen, everything should be seen. And then if I can wrap up with this, okay? This is just a special request. So as you might all know, by federal law, all the records have to be kept for 22 months after the election. Well, guess what? We're almost there. September 3rd, every jurisdiction can go destroy everything. They can destroy all the paper ballots, they can destroy all the evidence from the 2020 election. So there'll be forever a question. Was there additional issues? Were there, my question. There's a lot of red flags here, guys. I really would like to know if the machines have been compromised or not. I don't know, but there's a lot of red flags here. So a bad actor, of course, is working really, really hard, and maybe that's why we have such massive resistance, to make sure we don't get access to those ballots, okay? Well, we've got one last opportunity in the next few weeks nationwide. And what I will tell you is that you can see on the screen... And what I will tell you is that, you can see on the screen there, something that's not been revealed anywhere else, because I couldn't prove it, but in a few weeks, there'll be no chance of proving it, one way or the other. And what that is, is that when I was in Michigan, I happened, through a series of circumstances, to discover something in their election. And what it was, was the Michigan Justice of the Supreme Court race or contest in 2020. There were seven candidates running. You got to select two. And at this point, our team, small team, had managed to decode the election files. Now, we decrypted them, we decoded them. We understood about 95% of these hex files, so they're not in any standard format, we just figured it out. Okay? And there were memory pointers, a whole series of memory pointers in the different election files and so on. And we'd been studying it, and I recognized something. And out of the blue, I got pointed, because of this recognition, at this particular race. I hadn't looked at it all, I don't know any of these candidates. And what I discovered was that three of the candidates in this race were treated differently in the programming. Now, someone may say, well, yeah, but it was an odd race, seven people, you get to choose two, maybe that's why they were treated differently. But there was another race on this ballot that was almost identical to this, and they weren't treated any differently. They were treated the same way as all the other races and contestants. So the three that were treated differently were Mary Kelly, Brock Schwartzy, and Elizabeth Welch. Okay? You can see them on the ballot there. They were pointing off into a different memory sequence or memory location. They had a different pointer. It wasn't in the correct sequence to follow all the others. Okay? And it pointed to some files where there were bytes that were extra, that the others didn't have. Hmm. So then I thought, well, I need to find out, who is Mary Kelly? I didn't know, so I did some checking. Turns out, Mary Kelly had been previously elected a Supreme Court Justice in the state. She was a Republican and had already served as Supreme Court Justice. And the woman that ended up winning turned out to be Elizabeth Welch, who was a total newcomer. Okay? Happened to be Democrat. So turns out, the result was flipped. The result flipped the court. Okay? I'm not saying the result was flipped. The result flipped the court. So because she won, now the court had three Democrats and two Republicans. Prior to that, it had three Republicans and two Democrats. Okay? Had Mary Kelly won, it would still be three Republicans and two Democrats. So it had a very significant outcome. But I never could figure out how to trigger it, so I never really wrote it up. It didn't end up in an expert report. But I don't know. It looks to me like there's the possibilities, in fact, strong possibility, that there was something going on in this race. In fact, I statistically looked at the numbers, and it looks possible that Mary Kelly had a bunch of her votes taken and split between Brock Schwartzy and Elizabeth Welch. Brock Schwartzy is a Republican, and Welch is a Democrat. And it's possible, I'm not saying this occurred, I'm saying there's some strong pointers that say there could be a problem in Michigan in the Supreme Court race. That's what I see down with the bits and the bytes. And so what I would do, I think all of us need to know, I don't care which party you are, I don't really am not for any specific candidate, but I want to know, did they do third-level manipulation? Is someone doing third-level manipulation on these machines? So what I would request, it's not for you guys, unless you want to go do it across the state of New Mexico and elsewhere, but in Michigan, there's a specific way that we can simply check this. And that is, the townships that actually have the ballots, the counties, the townships are in charge, they have their own tabulator, they have their ballots and so on. And so what I would request is that every township in Michigan do a simple thing, before they destroy the ballots, is go count the Supreme Court election by hand. And see if Mary Kelly really got the votes she got, and if these other two, Schwartzy and Welch, got the votes they got. It would make me feel, and I hope and pray, that people do this en masse, not just one or two, because they'll go do that a couple places, say, see, there's nothing to see, don't anybody else count. They're going to do that. So, but anyway, I'm asking them to do that. Right? So that is the end of my presentation. Thank you for patiently listening to a very long one. And I'll turn it over to David.
I have provided the commissioners with a copy of our report that deals with our examination of the records here in Otero County, and I'm just going to add to Jeff's pile of red flags. I always start, every time I come talk to you, I start with your voter rolls. You've seen this graph before, but for the sake of the audience who have not seen it, your voter rolls are being manipulated. And if your voter rolls are manipulated, there's a purpose behind it. So keep that in mind. I'm going to show you how I know that they're manipulated. This is a graph of the daily registration count in Otero County from 2016 to 2021. This is the number of people that were registered each day over that time period. You can see, I'm going to point with my pointer, from 2016 and 2017, they looked pretty quiet, not a whole, maybe the maximum number of people registered in any given day is about 10. However, starting in 2018, you can see that it goes from about 10 a day to more like 15 or 20 a day. And then in 2020, right up to the election, we're up to 40 a day or 200 a day. In fact, even on Sundays, this blank space under here means that even on Sundays, we had 30 people being registered on Sundays. Now, there's lots that's probably causing that. One of the things is that in 2018, MVD was given right access to the rolls. So instead of having the rolls maintained by the Secretary of State and the county clerks, which is 33 offices plus the Secretary of State, it's now opened up electronically to all of our MVD offices, which is probably hundreds of points of vulnerability. And you can see when that happened, so did a massive number of registration manipulation came with that same time period. Something else our Secretary of State did around that same time was we found some emails where our Secretary of State is discussing with an organization called Rock the Vote, they're a far-left-wing organization, and they were asking, hey, we'd really like to have backdoor access to your OVR so that we can inject voter registrations easier into the rolls. And it appears that she granted them that access. So when those two things happened, a lot of manipulation started happening in our rolls. Something that was the law prior to 2020 in our state was our voter rolls were to be shut down at the beginning of early voting until the canvas was complete. So every election should have had a blank space on this record for primaries, for generals, for local elections. You can see that there's no blank spaces in this record. So that law was obviously being ignored. Now, I want to draw your attention to this red box here on the right side. This is when a massive amount of manipulation was happening in the rolls. And it makes no sense at all, because your county clerk told us, we gave her a small subset of registrations, and we said, can you tell us where these registrations come from? It turns out that about 80% of the registrations that she processes originate with the MVD. Okay? If most registrations are coming from the MVD, how did we have this massive spike in registrations over the summer and prior to the election and even after the election? Because our governor shut down the MVD in March of 2020 and did not open it again until December 2020. So here we have this massive, ridiculous amount of registrations coming into Otero County in a time when the largest source of your registrations was shut down. Okay? Now, I showed you Otero County, it doesn't matter what county you look at, it's the same in every single one of them. So whether you're in Otero County, a small red county, or a large blue county like Bernalio, you have the same shape. The rules about shutting down the registrations were never respected. You have the same massive amount of manipulation when the motor vehicle department was closed. Totally goes against anything we've seen in the history of our registration database. Okay? So I have been called a manipulator of data for showing you that by your own county clerk and others as well. But this is, I'm showing you a graph right here, this is an EAC graph, so the federal government produced this graph. And there, this is just a measure of how many registrations coming in were new and valid. Okay? And you can see that in 2016, 100% of the registrations coming into Otero County were new and valid. So all this paperwork she was sent to process, that was legitimate. Starting after 2016, though, 2018 and 2020, less than half of them are new and valid now. And this is the government's graph, this isn't mine. So it shows you the same thing. So let's go back to the graphs of, I was showing you, I'm just zooming into nine weeks' worth, and then this is the whole state's data in one graph. I'm just, I also pulled them out by party, so you can see the total registrations are that yellow line, the Democrats are the blue line, the red line are Republicans, the decline to state are the unaffiliated voters, the gray line. Okay? You can see these perfect weekly shapes, happening week after week after week, for years on end. Humans do not behave this way. They don't show up in perfect patterns, with Democrats always having a few more registrations each day than the Republicans, and the decline to states approximately matching Republicans for week after week after week, after year after year after year. As a civil engineer, I've seen patterns of human behavior, whether it's through water systems or wastewater systems or what have you, and the different projects I've been involved in. I've never seen anything this regular. This is manipulation. This is an algorithm. Okay? So what exactly are they doing? What's the point of the manipulation? This right here is Otero County's makeup by party for all of your precincts. So the graph on the left, that's how Otero County looked in 2012. You had 41 precincts at the time. The green line is how many were registered as decline to state. It's kind of a flattish line that hovers around 20%. And then you've got your Democrats is the blue line, and then Republicans are the red line. Okay? So the point I want you to get out of this is, there's no apparent relationship between these parties. The green line, the decline to state, kind of just hang out by themselves the way they should, and they're not really related to the other parties. But by 2022, this is what your county looks like now. Now you have 59 precincts, and now look, the green line follows the blue line almost perfectly. So these decline to states have been injected or massaged around so that now, you have a relationship between two parties that previously had no relationship, and there's no reason they should have a relationship, but now they're registered in equal numbers in every precinct in your county. And this is true statewide. And it's true when you look at the registrations coming in, the decline to states and the Democrats match almost exactly. That's not possible in an honest system. Okay? So why should you care so much about the registration? You should care because nobody's going to go to that trouble to commit those crimes for no reason. There's a purpose behind it. And something else that you need to know is that your registration database is hosted on the same platform as your election management and your election night reporting. So if one of those is compromised, that means all three of those are compromised because they share a platform. So if somebody's in there, they can get to anything they want. Okay? So your voter registration rolls are undermining our elections. Drop boxes are also undermining our elections. This is a picture of a drop box in Doniana County. You've seen this before. This is not an official voting drop box, it's just a black locked box for some other purpose. It was found at a warehouse on the outside of town, where hardly anybody knows this building is there, but a person walked by and looked in that slot, and it was filled to the brim with ballots. That's about 3,000 ballots, maybe 5,000, depending on the size of that box. Our state statutes are very clear, that for a secured container to be called a voting place, it has to have certain criteria. It has to be marked, it has to have warnings on it, it has to have notices to the voter. This had none of these, these were illegally submitted. They also had no chain of custody, because I reviewed the chain of custody in this county. Chain of custody for these does not exist. So that was illegal, and those were all inserted into our election. Okay? This matters to you. I know it's Doniana County and not Otero County, but it matters to you because you share races with Doniana County. You share the top of the ballot, and you shared, it's a District 53 House race. So you had a race between Ricky Little and Willie Madrid that was decided by just a handful of votes. At the end of election night, Ricky Little was winning by seven or so. And then the Doniana County clerk actually turned in 200 late ballots, she's known for doing that. And then by the next day, Willie Madrid had inched ahead, and it required a recount. Willie Madrid won at the end of the recount. So it's quite possible that there's, you know, multiple ballots for those candidates in this box, which affects Otero County. Now, you actually had chain of custody problems in Otero County also. So we scanned ballots, or we scanned the absentee ballot envelopes for all 6,000 ballots cast here, absentee. And we pulled off the postmark, we pulled off the receive date, we pulled off the name, and we did an analysis on that. It turns out, you're missing chain of custody in this county also, for 850 ballots. So you had, I analyzed all the paperwork that y'all gave me, I plotted that, that's this, the blue line is how many were in your paperwork that were turned in by drop box, not through the post office. And the gray line, though, is how many the absentee envelopes say were turned in by drop boxes and not by the USPS. And most of those were actually submitted, about half of those were submitted on a single day. Okay? So this is a giant red flag. This throws that race for the House race into question, in my opinion. Okay? Some other anomalies on those envelopes, we had envelopes with multiple postmarks. We talked to two USPS employees, one was a supervisor high up, and she said, there's really no reason you should have more than one postmark, so why do we have envelopes with three postmarks on them? Is it possible they were intercepted, changed, mailed again? Maybe? Okay? We had a ballot that was turned in by a friend, they wrote it right on the envelope, that's illegal. Ballots can only be turned in by an immediate relative, not a friend, this one was illegal. We had ballots that were not signed and didn't have the social security number on them, but they were counted. Okay? A county clerk let me know that actually putting your social security number on the envelope was a temporary measure, which has expired, and now all you've got to put on there is your birth year. Your birth year is essentially public information that comes with the voter rolls. So anyone, if they can get their hands on an envelope, can cast a ballot for any absentee voter with a birth year. That's ridiculous. Okay? So we found some other red flags. This is a ballot which was scanned twice, because it had a duplicate image which was stored twice in the database, but there was only one piece of paper matching it, because we matched up all the images with every piece of paper. We found, looking for twins, and this one had one piece of paper, but it has a duplicate image. How did that happen? Somehow, the machine allowed that to happen. Okay? Jeff mentioned the ICE tabulator is a printer. This is a ballot we found in Doniana County, and it has a mixture of handmade and printed marks on it. So the two marks that are circled, those were printed by the ICE tabulator, and I have a high-resolution scan of it over here. It's very clear when you're seeing it in person, because it has a distinct appearance, though it doesn't really show up after you, in the images that Dominion scans. But this has a mix of hand, hand marks, that's what that one was, it was made with a ballpoint pen, and then these two were printed by the tabulator. How did that happen? Okay? This is a ballot from Otero County, we found a few hundred of these. This is where they appear to have been filled out with two different types of ink, and the way we know that is that this is the front of the ballot here on the left. You can see the votes bled through to the back on the right. Right? But here's your votes that were on the back of the ballot, they didn't bleed through to the front. So either somebody switched their pen, or maybe it got printed on, or maybe somebody else filled out the back of the ballot. We found a lot of people that didn't choose to vote those down ballot races. Okay? We found some perhaps printing errors, or maybe unofficial ballots, because some were stretched or skewed. So this is two ballots from the same precinct, they should have been printed from the same PDF, but the one on the right, the ovals aren't where they should be when you measure them off of the field of the ballot. Okay? Here's another one where it's very skewed. So you can see the edge of the paper, and you can see that this ballot was printed very crooked. And the back is more crooked than the front, which I have a hard time imagining how a ballot-on-demand printer would do that. So either it's a big problem with a ballot-on-demand printer, or maybe this was not an official ballot. Okay? Now, this is a big deal, what I'm going to show you now, because the tabulators have illegal error rates, they count folds as votes, and they're programmed incorrectly for write-ins. And all three of those things are enough that they should be decertified, because our state law is very clear that the error rate for a county the size of Otero, you should have only had four errors, four. We found 71. So that's 15 times higher. These tabulators- These tabulators, the state law specifically states that they cannot count folds as votes, that's what the EAC requires, that they have to tell the difference between handwriting and a fold on the paper. They don't. They actually count folds as votes. They're also programmed incorrectly for write-ins in New Mexico, and I'll show that to you. So these are the examples that show you those things on the right. Example A, the tabulator counted a vote for the write-in, even though the oval wasn't filled in. The reason it counted it is that there was writing where you're allowed to write, but by the state, by Secretary of State's own statement, you have to fill in the oval and write a name to have a write-in ballot cast. Just because you wrote on the ballot doesn't mean you're casting a vote, but it counted it as a vote. Okay, B, C, or let's see, B and D, the person filled in the oval for this candidate, and then they also wrote the name in the write-in, the tabulator counted that as an overvote. So they canceled out this vote for B and D, the same error, because there was writing there, even though that oval wasn't filled in. Okay, number C, and E, and F, you can see a fold line going through that write-in box, do you see it? It was seeing that as writing, and it was counting that as votes. So here's three examples of the tabulators viewing a fold as a vote, and incorrectly on top of that, because the oval wasn't filled in, it shouldn't have done anything, even if there was writing in that box. Okay, here's two more folds as votes examples. Here's the fold is going directly through an oval, so it counted this as an overvote, and the same thing over here. Okay, that's illegal. Our state statutes say so. Those machines need to be decertified. Tabulators are not smarter than humans, either. Here are some examples where the voter made a choice, but they only filled out, they filled out less than 35% of that oval, and the machines will not count anything where it's less than 35%. So it looks to me these voters were pretty clear in what their intent was, but the machines didn't see it that way, and so all these votes were dropped. This vote on the right side, I don't know what sort of a pen this voter used, if it was black or blue, but the tabulator interpreted it as too light to actually count it, so this vote was lost here for Shannon Bacon. Here's some where it looks like maybe the ballot wasn't printed very well, and the voter kind of filled out the oval to help them out or something, and they were clearly voting for one candidate, but the tabulator saw that, you know, stray mark as a vote. So again, if these were counted by humans, they would have, you know, known what the voter's intent was, but these were all lost as well. Here was a voter, they were actually marking out a candidate's name, and their pen went through the oval, though they weren't trying to cast a vote, they were actually, you know, trying to make a statement but not vote for this person. So these were counted incorrectly. Now Dominion actually advertises their tabulators, that some of those errors that I just showed you, where you have an overvote, that there is a check for a person should be alerted, hey, there's an overvote, you need to examine this ballot. So whether it's in person, there should be an error and allow the voter to make a change, or if they're processing absentee ballots, it should alert the, you know, elections workers that they need to examine these votes. Were these genuine overvotes, or did something go wrong here? So this is actually right out of the Dominion's handbook, that these are the sorts of errors that can be prevented. Well, it didn't work, because all those votes I showed you, and here's some more, where this is some clear intent, these are all absentee ballots, you know, they didn't want this one, they initialed their choice, they were clear in what their intent was, all of these were missed. Okay, so either the error wasn't appearing, or the election workers didn't know what to do when they did, but all of these were not correctly counted, even though Dominion, you know, advertises that this sort of thing will be prevented. So you're also, your election system is not certified? Your election system is not certified, okay? Your Secretary of State likes to say that they are, because she's got a few letters and some test reports, but they're not correctly, they were not correctly done, because in 2017, the accreditation of Pro VNV expired, okay? Later that year, they did a test on the system that we use, the particular version of software, they submitted it while they didn't have accreditation. If I submit a set of plans to you as an engineer, well, I don't have accreditation, that's a crime, I'll probably lose my license, I'll be disciplined. They certified a number of state systems on an expired accreditation. In fact, they didn't even realize their accreditation had expired until 2020, when they sent a letter to the EAC, and they said, oh, whoops, we let our accreditation expire, can you re-accredit us? A year later, the EAC finally re-accredited them, but they had already certified multiple states' election systems on expired accreditation. Okay, that doesn't apply in any other industry. Why are we accepting that in our most important piece of infrastructure, which is our election system? Okay, in 2021, the EAC adopted a new version of standards that we must comply with by state law. However, none of the test labs have even applied to become accredited under the new system. So there's, our state statutes require we always be current to the latest version. And in fact, we can't be current to the latest version, because there's not even a test lab out there that can test to the latest version, because they haven't bothered to apply for accreditation, even though everything is in place for them to do so. So we are actually not accredited, we haven't been since 2017. Now that's just your Dominion system. It actually gets worse with your e-poll book system, which is actually far more vulnerable than your tabulators, in my opinion. Okay? The e-poll book system has a test report from 2011. The e-poll book system has software on it that gets updated maybe on a monthly basis, like as often as the apps on your phone. Okay, and I called the vendor to make sure of that. So they're saying, we're accredited because we checked back in 2011. Well, it's 11 years later, and you've updated your software multiple times, the EAC doesn't let you separate your printer from your software, it's all a system, it all has to be evaluated, and it's not. So the e-poll books are a joke, the certification of that is a joke, there's not even an argument there that they're certified. Okay, I want to move on quickly to risk limiting audits. The RLA process, this is a quote from your Secretary of State on her website. "The RLA process involves randomly selecting races and precincts throughout the state and hand counting the results in those precincts. The hand counted results are then compared to the normal machine counted results to ensure accuracy." Now, in this statement, she is implying that you're actually checking election results. Nothing could be further from the truth. You're not checking election results. You're taking a teeny tiny subset of ballots, you're hand counting those, you're running that teeny tiny subset of ballots through a machine, and you compare them. There's no reason at all that every time you have a risk limiting audit, every single one of them should pass. There's no reason that it should mess up on 22 ballots, but it does frequently. The Secretary of State also says, "Any discrepancies between the results are thoroughly investigated." We know for a fact that's a lie, we have some people in here who might speak during public comment, but there was a clerk in our state, a vote flipped during this risk limiting audit, and she told the Secretary of State, she told the FBI, none of them did anything. Okay, there is no investigation. Now, the accountant who does the audits actually puts a disclaimer right on those risk limiting audits, and this is what he says. "We make no representation regarding the sufficiency of the procedures which the Secretary of State gives them, and either for the purpose for which this RLA has been requested, or for any other purpose." So they admit that the audit that they do, they do just what the Secretary of State tells them. There's no one in existence who would call that an audit. They also don't stand behind the results, they don't know what they mean, they're not making any statements that they're adequate or not, and I can tell you that they're not, because here are statements, these are the results of our risk limiting audits going back to our 2012 general election. We don't even do audits on the primaries or the local elections, so you could cheat at will and no one would ever find it. But this is, this table shows you the number of errors in the Secretary of State's own reports. In 2012, there were 77 errors, and remember, you're just taking a tiny subset of the ballots cast. The error rate was .213, which is 266 times the legal limit. Okay, so if you just look over here on the right side, how many times over the legal limit, every single risk limiting audit ever done in this state has gone. These are failing, these audits are failing, they don't meet EAC requirements, these machines should be decertified. All right. I want to touch briefly on our canvas that we did, because I believe it takes the proof. I mean, here are the people that are saying, several of our canvassers are here, and they went to tell you some of their experiences, but we can tell you the people that say, no, I did not cast a ballot, or I did not cast a vote in that election, but there was a vote cast for them. Or they know they voted, and their vote isn't there in the voter history. We actually found some absentee envelopes with names on them, and we checked, and there were drop votes in those absentee ballot envelopes, because here's their name, here's their precinct, here they are in the voter rolls, no vote for 2020, even though we have the envelope. Okay, so this is happening. We found incorrectly recorded votes, where people said, you know, I voted on election day, but it's recorded as some other thing. The piece of this pie that I think is probably the biggest red flag to add to our pile is that 30% of the people in the voter rolls are not at the address where they're registered, and they need to be removed. Our statutes are very clear that residency has a clear meaning, and you must reside at a place, or be a student or military, to be registered to an address where you don't actually live. And there's a plentiful number of people that do not live at these addresses, and these rolls need to be cleaned. It also tells us that Eric is essentially doing nothing for us, because other rolls are this out of date. Okay, here's a nice foundation with no house on it, where people vote here in town. We had the blessing of going to a mobile home park, where the owner of that mobile home park was very kind to us, and he sat down with our canvassers, and he had records going back many years of who had lived in that park when they moved there, when they left. There were 88 registrations to this particular address. So this gentleman went through these names with us, one by one. 12 out of the 88 had never lived in the park, but three of them had cast ballots, and most of these registration, had registration dates in 2020 or 2021, when all that crazy manipulation was happening. 14 registrants had moved away before the election, but six of them cast ballots. Two registrants show as having registered to the park address after they had moved away. 45 of the registrations had registration dates in 2020 and 2021, when all that massive manipulation is happening. Okay, we don't believe that individual people are actually doing this, I think it's automated, I think the voter rolls make that clear, that it's going on in the manipulation of the rolls. Okay, so just to, by the numbers, our best estimate for the registrations which are fine, out of 34,000 is about 20,000 are good. The voter history is correct, the addresses are correct, those are the real people that live there. There was about 800 who said they cast, well, we're projecting, right, because we took a large sample size, and so this is projecting to the whole county. About 800, probably, by our best estimate, had drop votes, about 1,500 were ghost votes, about 1,600 were not correctly recorded. Okay? And then you had another 4,000 who were not at the address, and they voted, so those are possible ghosts, we can't verify that at this point. And then we had 6,000 who were not at address, and they didn't vote. Okay, so some of the things from our examination of your records that we would recommend right away, that you all can do, because you have the authority, is pass an ordinance to prohibit drop boxes in this county. They're undermining our election. The clerk needs to clean the rolls, the statutes give you the authority to actively clean them, you don't have to wait around for Eric, it says it very clearly. So you could implement a program to clean these rolls. You need to make monthly backup of the rolls. There are actually no historical copies of the rolls kept by your clerk. So all she's got is the most recent version. So if somebody tossed 5,000 new registrations in there, she wouldn't be able to go back and compare to something else, and see, does this make sense? What's the pattern? When did they all get injected? We have no idea, because we don't keep backups. They need to be backed up every month, and immediately before and after every election, so those sorts of things can be checked. You need to do away with voting convenience centers, you have the authority to do that, because you set the voting places, you can do that. We have to be able to vote in one place, every voter one place, and that will allow you to use paper poll books. The e-poll books are a giant vulnerability, we have to get rid of them, you have to have paper poll books. Our law specifically states that ballots must be sequentially numbered, and they're not. You have to use secure paper with sequentially numbered ballots, it can be, you know, private, you'd have to do it so that it's private for the voter. You need to cease Otero County's participation in Eric, you actually pay them money, you have some line item in your budget where you're paying them every year, we need to get out of that. Allow only ink cartridges in the tabulators while the ATA feature is in use, you don't want to have the possibility that that tabulator could print on any ballot at any time, those ink cartridges should not be installed unless an ADA person comes and requests it, and then it can be installed just to fill out that ballot and take it back out again. Now, there's more that needs to be done besides that, that's not entirely in your authority, and will require some cooperation, but I think one of the reasons we're told that it's okay that 30% of your rolls are out of date is, well, they might be military, we don't know. So how about you add a field in your voter rolls, that this is a military person or their family, so that you know that. Disconnect rolls from the Compromised State System, that system is clearly compromised, you have to get your voter rolls in your own hands and disconnected from that. You need to demand that the SOS investigate what's happening in the rolls. And then, of course, hand count paper ballots at the precinct level. One of the biggest vulnerabilities that we're actually doing to ourselves is we're publishing regular lists of who has voted in early voting, which are widely distributed, it's a digital file, can be forwarded to anybody. And with that list, you know who's voted, you know whose absentee ballot you could request if you wanted to, to vote somebody else, you could show up in person, just claim to be one of those people that hasn't voted, tell them the address, and you get to vote. You don't need an ID, we have to have ID. So there's a lot more to what we did, and it's all documented in the report, and I'm not going to go into any more detail, because it's getting late, but I want to introduce our last speaker. Her name is Cynthia Butler, and she has a bachelor and master's degree in statistics. She's a statistician, data forensic scientist, and consultant, she has decades of experience consulting with Fortune 500 companies, training engineers to design statistically efficient experiments with factor interactions. She has coached top managers on using data to increase operational excellence. She essentially wrote the textbook for this sort of thing. And then one of the things I want to point out about her is that she did a project, not an eight-month project, where she was investigating fraud that was being injected to national test scores in an elementary school, because there was a principal there who needed those test scores to be high, so that he wouldn't lose salary. So she actually spent eight months examining this data, it's actually very similar to what we did. So I want her to speak to you next. She's joining us from Utah. Let me get her on the phone here. Hi Cynthia.
Hi.
I'm sorry, I'm going to get this. I'm sorry, you're not on the full screen yet, just a second. Whoops. All right, you're on Cynthia.
Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Very good. Is it large enough, everything's good?
Yes, it's good.
Hello, everybody. I'm really glad to be here and share with you some of the findings that I've been looking at with your very own data from your election results. You might be interested in what the source of the data is, the digital record of each ballot is stored in the election management system, and that digital ballot is called a cast vote record, or a CVR for short. So I will be talking about CVRs for the rest of my presentation. And I'm going to try to end in 20 minutes, just so you know. CVRs exist in the election database system, they have a common data format specification, you can look it up, it's at the federal government through the NIST, and they have a common data format, so that they can easily transfer between different equipment, different software, different vendors. The CVR sometimes gets confused, because it can actually refer to three different things. A CVR, sometimes people talk about it for A CBR, sometimes people talk about it for just the ballot image. Uh, there's also a text document showing how the filled in ovals were translated. I'm not going to be doing either one of those meanings tonight, but I am going to be doing the third one, which is a CBR is a row type record of contests, choices, and many other variables. So the data I'm going to be showing you tonight is all the CBR rows, similar to a spreadsheet, for all the contests and all the variables. Before I show you the very first plot, I want to go over what marginal differences are in percentages. As a statistician, I had engineers come to me and say, how many samples do I need to detect a difference in yield from 90 to 95%? If I can show I've made an improvement like that, I can save the company a million dollars. Well, that marginal difference of 5% is small. I sometimes have a quality manager come to me and ask me, how many samples do I need to detect a difference in my quality? Defectives going from 3% to 1%? Well, that marginal difference of 2% is small. And likewise, if we have a candidate who's doing a poll for, uh, to see how favorable their, their constituents are towards them, you have a margin of error, plus or minus 3% is common. So that's also small. You are going to be seeing tonight differences in vote percentages between groups that are 20 to 30%. That's huge. I just wanted to get you calibrated a little bit for some of these things you're going to be seeing. Another thing that I want to point out is as a statistician, I often help people figure out how to, how many samples they need. We didn't do that here because we have the entire population of all of the election results. So we're not looking to do any kind of estimating. We have them all. But I did want to point out that some of these differences you're going to be seeing are huge. One of the tools that I use in the analysis is something called a statistical control chart. It has upper and lower limits and the points within those limits are referred to common causes of variation. So anything inside those points, they can vary up and down within those limits, we would call that just random, just random causes of variation. I have an example here for a race in Otero. This is from the judicial retention race for Bryant. These are all the yes votes. You can see on that scale on the left, it was around 80%. And you can see your three portions of your votes was, um, uh, early mail-in is on the left, your absentee votes in the middle, about 50%, about is your early in-person voting. And on the right side is your election day in-person voting. Now, um, on the bottom axis, it says tabulator, subgroups in recorded order. So all of these votes are, have a tabulator ID associated with each one of them. And what, what I did is I took all of those records and I grouped all of the votes into subgroups of about 200. Because in Otero, for some reason, uh, the batch ID feature wasn't turned on. So there were no batches recorded. So I grouped them, um, myself and put them in two, and groups of 200. So, uh, if you look on the very right where it says size of the ballot count, sometimes all the groups, uh, sometimes the groups were real small and like 50. And so I made the point smaller if it was a smaller group. And the medium size is 100 and the bigger size is 200. So those would be things like, um, some people who didn't vote in the down race. Well, then those sample sizes would be a lot smaller. So if you look at the very top, you can see that the total number of votes for this race was 19,427 and the overall percent of yes votes was 78%. So one last thing, um, I colored the dots according to not the tabulator ID, although I could have colored it for tabulator ID. Instead, I colored it for the voting center that was associated with that tabulator ID. So all the black dots are from, uh, Otero County tabulators. And all of these colored dots are from the local convenience centers. And you can check them and see, uh, which ones they are. So let's, let's look at these control limits now. You can see that for this race, for Pete's sakes, everybody is within those control limits. Oh, I wanted to point out that they vary, the control limits vary also according to the size of each of those subgroups. So here you can see a little tiny dot, so its control limits were wider. If we don't have as much information, that means our limits go wider. If we have a lot more information or larger sizes of the subgroups, then the limits go narrower. So the conclusion for this chart is no statistical evidence consistent with mail-in ballot stuffing or digital manipulation. So I wanted to start out with this chart and make sure everybody is grounded on what we're going to be seeing next. I wonder what it looks like to see statistical evidence consistent with mail-in ballot stuffing or digital manipulation. Let's look at the next slide. Here we have two races. On the top is the county commissioner for district three. This happens to be for the Democrat Cummins. And, um, on the bottom, we have one for the county treasurer, a Democrat for Milton. And these are the votes for these two candidates. And you can see immediately, it jumps out and hits you in the face practically, that for the early mail-in absentee portion of your vote, which happened for about three weeks, about the same time period as the early in-person votes, about the same three weeks. We had a difference of about 30% between the percent who voted for the Democrat early mail-in versus, you can see the average down here, uh, between these two groups. Not only that, but they're both black dots, meaning they were both counted at the Otero, they were part of the Otero County tabulators. Now these limits are a little bit wider because we had fewer votes, 9,000. And you can see these limits are a little bit narrower because we had more votes. We had 22,000. And, um, you can see that the limits work really good. Now up here, you see, um, this one went all the way from zero to 100. So we, a little teeny tiny dot there, so that's only maybe five or 10 votes. We can't really tell anything at all about that tabulator. And true to form, the statistical control limits go from 0 to 100%. So it says, I don't know what, what that one's doing. I can't tell anything. But we sure can tell, uh, the difference between this group and all the rest. Now on the bottom one here, we have a few that are poking out on the right side. These orange ones are all from, uh, the Chaparral Community Center. I believe I heard that they do tend to vote Democrat, they lean Democrat in that area. Um, the green one is from the Inn of the Mountain Gods and the blue one is from Mescalero. And so I understand that those are, are, are well-known to be Democrat, uh, leaning areas. And down here we have, I think there's eight that are obviously Republican-leaning, uh, community centers. And that's okay. This also shows that the control limits will point out, uh, if you are a certain, lean a certain way for a certain community. Let's look at the next slide. So here we have for President Biden. These are the yes votes for President Biden. Again, we see this 30% drop from the early mail-in absentee to everybody else, um, with a few Democrat-leaning ones and a few Republican-leaning ones. So, um, this is consistent with mail-in ballot stuffing, or if it wasn't physically mailed in, it would be consistent with a digital ballot stuffing. Let's look at the next block. This is for the US Senator race. This one is for the Democrat Lujan vote. These are the yes votes for Lujan. And the very same thing is happening. This is at about 57 to, um, about 27. So there's your 30% drop. Let's look at, uh, be prepared. This next slide is, I'm going to do a color change on you. You got used to these black dots. I'm going to change colors on you, so be prepared. I'm going to now color all of these local ones one color. And what happened is I found out that the Otero County actually had three, um, tabulators. And so now I'm going to color those. And I'm going to use a different kind of a background on my plot. So don't let this scare you. So here I learned that the orange ones actually happened at a place called the Central Count. The purple ones have, oh, here, here it is, right up here. Clerk's office is the orange ones. The administration building are the purple ones and the fairgrounds are the blue ones. So, um, it's possible that whatever was going on in this group could have had something associated with the clerk's office. Um, I'm not making accusations here, but that is a possibility that somehow the clerk's office might have been associated with that digital ballot stuffing of some sort. I don't know. It's confounded. It's totally confounded with, with, um, uh, with just the mule, 2,000 mule type of ballot stuffing. We can't distinguish. Now I'm going to take you back to the black dots, but this time I've pulled up Sandoval County, New Mexico. So this is Sandoval County. This is Biden again. These are the votes for Biden. Can anybody see a difference between Otero Biden votes and Sandoval Biden votes? Not only is there a shift, so here's the average at 70%, down to 40%. There's our 30% drop. Not only do you have a shift, you have a linear trend. So at Sandoval, they have two huge special causes going on. Let's examine that linear trend a little bit more. It starts up about 85% and it goes down to about 60%. So that trend in and of itself is a, is a 25% drop, besides the average dropping from 70% down to 40%. So from 80% down to 40%, it's, it's a 40% drop. One thing that's also kind of interesting is these light gray ones here, I don't, in, in Sandoval County, obviously it was bigger in terms of the number of local convenience centers they had. We had all of these, look at them all. And I chose to use the Sandoval County Vote Machine Warehouse as that gray color. So that's what this is. And notice how that trend kind of just keeps on going with those. So that raised suspicions to me. This darker color of gray was the Sandoval County Administration Building. They're right in the center of these limits. So it doesn't appear that anything nefarious was happening there. There's so much that you could pull out of this. In fact, I've, we've all spent hours and hours studying these, but let me keep going. I'm going to change colors on you again, so be prepared. Here we go. This is, you might be wondering why I've only been looking at Democrats. Well, here you get a Republican. This is Trump votes, yes for Trump. Now I'm changing the colors because I wanted you to see, these are now tabulators. And there's only three tabulators because they are, the blue one is tabulator number 3217, the purple one is tabulator number 395, the aqua one is tabulator 394. So why did I color those by tabulator instead of by location? I wanted to know, is that trend going on with all tabulators or just one tabulator? Is there an algorithm at work across all of them or just one of them? And now you know the answer to the question. The algorithm is happening across all those tabulators in this group in Sandoval, this is still Sandoval, um, for these three tabulators. Okay, I'm going to keep going. This is the US Senator race for Lujan. You're probably thanking me for going back to the black dots because it kind of makes you, you have to, you have to get ready for those, all those colors and get your eyes ready to analyze them. So again, for the Senator race, we have the same thing going on. Oh, I, I labeled these with numbers. So this yellow one is 10. So if I come over here and see 10, you can see that's the Community Resource Center. And this green one here is labeled, uh, I can't really see it. I think it's a 17. Yeah, San Felipe Pueblo Senior Center. And this, uh, I did that one, uh, and, and I labeled the, the ones down here below too, so you can see who they were. So here's the next race. This is US Representative District One in Sandoval County. I chose this one because you can see how crazy the control limits are. And it's because if you look up here, um, we only had 12,000 votes. So this is a down ballot race and also I'm assuming not everybody was eligible to vote for this, this candidate. And as you can see, the size says they're mostly ones. So where are those ones? Those ones would be at the 100% and at the 0%. And so there were bigger, there were bigger numbers right here. So it looks like this color, um, was predominantly the one that got to vote for that candidate. But there were a bunch of early voters and if you squish your eyes, you can see a trend going down. And there was a bunch that were done at the, um, at the warehouse. So the limits, the control limits, I just want to point out, the control limits are really, really great at understanding how much common cause variation there is whenever you're looking at proportions or percentages. Here's the next race, US Representative District Three. This again is Sandoval. You can see the same thing. Here we have, oh, judicial retention. Now tell me, what do your eyes see? What is going on here? Do we have a shift? A little tiny one? Now this one, if I had a big enough sample size, I might be able to tell you that was a significant shift. But we're kind of to the point where we don't even care about that shift. We've been dealing with 30% shifts. How about a linear trend? Do you see a linear trend? An algorithm going on? Absolutely not. In fact, everybody's well behaved in here, even in here, and even in here. So for this judicial retention race for Judge Smith voting yes, there was no algorithm, there was no ballot stuffing. This is crucial to understand because that means it's deliberate. There's deliberate manipulation going on for some races, not all races. In fact, a lot of the races. Okay. So you might be asking, um, what about party turnout? Well, we put together, I put together this little table for you. On the top are, is the turn, um, the actual percent of votes, how votes were distributed that were cast for your three groups. So it turns out 24% were here. I thought it was 50%. It's actually 56% and it's 20% on election day. Well, how many Dems, how many unaffiliated, how many Republicans turned out for those categories? So if I just let you look at that for a minute, what do you see? One thing that's kind of funny is these are all 17%. But that's not what I'm focusing on and I ignored the others. I'm just totaling up these, these three parties here. But if you, this is what I saw. These are the ones that I circled. Now, when I run a KISPR contingency test on this, everything turns out to be significant. So, because we have the population basically, these are, these are the numbers. And they are very unusual. You will have to postulate what you think that means. Now what about looking at this by precinct? So that's another question. Did those results happen over the precincts or just some precincts? Over all of them or some of them? Well, I plotted the data. Well, I plotted the data this way. So the early mail-in absentee are red dots. And the early in-person is green, and the election day is blue. And what I want, let me tell you, the race here is for State Representative District 51, and we're back to Otero. So I wanted to point out, can you tell a pattern there? Can you see that pattern? The pattern is that the red dots are always about 30% higher than the green and the blue dots. Not every, not exactly every time, but pretty much that distance from the red dots to the lower dots is 30%, no matter which precinct voted in this race. Here, we had a precinct that started out, well, it wasn't quite as big, these two precincts. But overall, that's a very consistent pattern. So, back to my question. Is this algorithm happening over all the precincts? Yes. All right. Let me just throw a few more up at you because I've got, here's the county clerk, race, and a lot more people can vote here, so we have a lot more precincts available. And here you can see one that's different, standing out by itself. That is precinct number 11. And there's a few others. Now, I want to point out that how I ordered the precinct ID here is I started with the very largest one first. You might recognize 49, precinct 49 is your biggest one. And here, these are big dots for those groups. And out here to the right, you might recognize that precinct 2, 3, and 4 are very tiny. And so it's 57. And so the variation should be less on the left side and more on the right side. And it is. Let's look at another one. Here's one for the Senator race. It's the very same thing. This precinct's all standing out by itself. This is a special cause. We could go look at that precinct to try to understand why that precinct is different than the rest. These again are little tiny precincts, probably not worth our time to investigate. But overall, the pattern is all the red dots are on the top, except for that one. And they're all spread out about 30%. Are these, is this algorithm happening across all the precincts? Yes, except for this one. And this one. There's about four, five, or six precincts that you can pick out here that that doesn't work. Okay, let me go to some projections. So for Otero, if we just took out that 30%, and here are some calculations that are a little bit closer to reality, what would happen to the results if we took the 30% off? And you can look at this table later, but basically, there's only one race for Otero where it might have made a difference, and that was for State Representative District 53, Madrid versus Little. I can't even remember who won. Here's who won. These are the official results. 1,200 to about 1,200, very, very close race. But if you took those, if you took that 30% out, what was it? Actually, for this case, it was only a 17% drop. If you took that out, then the other, the other one would have won. Who's the other one? Little, I think I got that right. Yeah. Let's look at another one. For Sandoval, I'm not gonna take you through this because I know you're mostly Otero people, but Sandoval, the president, the US Senate, the US Representative, two of those, the state senate, those would have all maybe flipped. So would the state representative districts. So would the Supreme Court. So would the Court of Appeals judges. So would the district attorney, the county clerk, and the county treasurer. So why is this important to talk about Sandoval? Because I do believe that some of their races affect you because you vote in the same kind of representatives on some of those. And if they're having not only a shift, but an algorithm at work in their votes, that affects you as citizens. Okay, I only have three more slides and I will be finished. I just wanted to point out that we are able to see this mail-in ballot stuffing or digital manipulation. I call this statistical evidence, consistent with these nefarious activities. The reason we can see this circumstantial evidence is because of those CBRs. Because we had every single ballot from the digital record with many, many variables. I haven't even shown you half the analysis that I've done. We haven't even scratched the surface. I've brought to you the most compelling. So I just wanted to point out that this kind of evidence is impossible to discover by sampling a thousand ballots or doing a spot check at your public county audit. You must have all the records, all the variables, and visualizations with statistical control limits to figure things out. So you might want to know, did this happen in my county? I don't live in New Mexico. In my county, I can't get those CBRs. So the answer to my question is, I don't know. And respectfully, I told my commissioners at their county meeting where they had their board of canvassers meeting, respectfully, I said, you don't know, but we could know. So, did this happen in a New Mexico county? I know, and now you know too.
Thank you, Cindy. And I know it's been a lot of information, so I'm going to briefly close and summarize much that we've been dealing with today. All right. A lot to unpack, so much. You got a national perspective from one of the only experts in the country that's looked at Otero, Maricopa, Antrim County, Georgia. And some of you are saying, well, I would have liked to have seen more in Otero. So would I. But one of the things that Mr. Lambert mentioned from the outset was the resistance. And I want to talk about this audit because I don't want this to be held against the auditors because many records and equipment were requested. Dominion tabulators and the Dominion Election Management System central computer was requested. And the Secretary of State and with the participation of your county clerk here basically did nothing to secure that for us. In fact, we were threatened with possible criminal prosecution for tampering if we touched it. And if we had touched them, they would have replaced them with the same vulnerable machines, and it would have been paid for courtesy of the taxpayer. And that's one thing I want to hit on tonight. We pay for this garbage. We pay for this garbage. It's your money. And we're here begging this commission like Moses showing up before Pharaoh, saying, let my people go. Let my people go. We don't want to debate with the clerk. We don't want to debate with you all. And this is an analysis of the stuff that we can get a hold of. And let me cue you into something. The folks that write your election code, it's not the legislature. Just like all laws, it starts with the lobbyists. It starts with special interest groups. And the people that are writing your election code are the machine providers. They're the ones that are designating what we can touch and what we can't touch. That's why it's so difficult. That's why when Mr. Nichols tries to give legal advice, it's like, I wish I could help you, but the code is written in such a way. And we continue to be enslaved by anomaly after anomaly after anomaly. And then you all are forced with taking this position of, okay, they're telling me I just have symbolic power. They just threaten me with removal. Wouldn't it be better if I just stayed in office and tried to work on the issues that I can? That's the fallback position. And here we are without the most important thing. And I'm telling you right now, commissioners respectfully, if they can bully you into this position to take and pick what they'll give you, then push comes to shove when you want to represent the ranchers, they'll take that from you as well. All the other issues that you think you could fight for, if they can take this from us, the most foundational issue, they can take anything from you. If they can tell you that your certification and your constitutional oath is symbolic, then what are you here for? We need you to stand in the gap. We need you to be the lesser magistrate. We need you to share in our sacrifice. Because folks, even though this was a late night and maybe some of you weren't expecting this, what you don't see is the 12 to 15 hours a day that these auditors work for free, cobbling together things, day and night to show up. Because we care about your voice, we care about your elections, we care about this commission, and we care about what happens when you're forced to certify something that you know is garbage, under threat of duress, criminal prosecution, and removal. Make them certify something. Don't have them force you to certify something through a rubber stamp. Because to say you certify something is to say that this, what you just saw tonight, there's no question, it's trustworthy. We also requested poll books and routers. You can't get them because they are rented out. And I think the tab is about $2.5 million per year for a rental. We couldn't audit those. And we just talked about how the poll books might be the most vulnerable aspect of the system. You see what's going on here is there's so much information that we can acquire, and everything is held at arm's length, and then we have the cynic, we have the skeptic saying, well, you haven't proved it to 100% degree. Well, I hate to break it to you folks, the burden of proof is not on the people of Otero in a conversation about public trust. Public trust has been eviscerated. And at any time, Dominion can call my bluff, Dominion can call their bluff, they can allow the clerk to inspect the source code. But tell you what, right now, your clerk wouldn't know what she's looking at. None of the clerks do. And they'll never provide the source code to show how these machines work. But they can make a liar out of me today. They could have made a liar out of me six months ago, seven months ago. They can't because they don't want to give up the recipe for these cheap machines. They could also call our bluff by saying, let's look at the tabulators, let's physically inspect them. But they won't do that. Those are two critical things that they could do right now to put this issue to rest. What's wrong? Why won't they? Commissioners rubber stamp these results when you have evidence, persuasive evidence that you lost a race here that shouldn't have been lost. Why didn't the Supreme Court listen to you all? Why didn't they hold off and give you all the due process to explore and investigate which the election code requires that you do? That's why you're the canvassing board. They didn't even give you time to do that. We've requested additional voter roll snapshots in the digital absentee register. We didn't get that. I can go on and on. But this comes down to one thing, courage. We sat down with you all November and January, and I told you, it's not about black letter law, it's not about any of those things. This is about right being right, wrong being wrong. That's what this is about. So that's why I was reminded about that tribal bit of wisdom, that civilization beats the honor out of a man. And I'll be honest, I come here and I feel like we want to give you everything that we can to help you with courage, but you're not alone. You're not alone. Mr. Lambert just shared with you that they're looking for a special prosecutor to go after him for what? For telling the truth and exposing this fraud. And you want to know something? The corrupt Attorney General, Dana Nessel of Michigan, has been communicating with our corrupt Attorney General Hector Baldairis to stop what's going on because he's bringing evidence from there to here to shine a light. Should he suffer? We have hit pieces written about us on a daily basis because we have the audacity to investigate. We've heard the death threats. Most recently, Denise Lang Brown is here, she's a candidate, she filed the fourth complaint against my law license, so I can't feed my children. For what? Working for free to get to the bottom of this. And Commissioner Griffin has a trial where they're trying to remove him from office. Why? Because he's involved in this effort. When there was already a bogus recall election where you guys retained him. So if you can have an FBI raid to Mar-a-Lago on a pretext, if you can punish a commissioner for standing up for his constituents, if you can punish mom sitting at the dining room table, if you can threaten someone like Mr. Lambert with prosecution, if you can rob me of my job, we're not asking you to risk anything more than everyone here. And what we want is to be let go of these damnable machines. We want to be let go. And if your fear is that you're going to be removed from office, that's a possibility. And if you think it's right that a tyrannical Supreme Court can just replace you with people of their choosing, well, welcome to the club because we're finding out that most of these people are being selected. The people here determine who sits at this commission table. The people here determine that, not the Supreme Court. And there are so many things that you can do, Mr. Nichols respectfully, to fight with us, for us, for your constituents. A writ of mandamus can be filed by this county declaring that the Secretary of State decertified these machines because they're not compliant with the law. Why hasn't that happened to the clerks? Why hasn't anyone investigated any of the claims by Mr. Lambert that your project file was violated in violation of the federal law, in violation of the state law? And it's just eye rolls. Eye rolls. Unbelievable. How dismissive, how arrogant. But that poll keeps growing. And the next time you see that poll, it's not going to be 59%, it's going to be over 60%. It's going to keep growing. So this is the time to stand in the gap, to do what's right, whatever the consequences, whatever the consequences. Because you gave your resolution, you gave your vote, you resolved, to be resolved is a promise something, that we're not going to go back to those slave machines this general election, we're not going to go to those drop boxes this general election. And as soon as we got threatened and bullied and dusted up with these liars, votes were changed. You're not helpless. You're not helpless. Let us stand with you. Please, fight for us, file lawsuits, maintain that vote. And if the clerk doesn't believe us, fine. But call our bluff or make the headache go away. Let's just get back to hand counting on paper ballots. You don't want to debate the machines, that's fine. Let's go to a system where we don't even have to debate. Let's just go to something that we can all have greater trust in, and you're told that you can't. Who do you work for? Do you work for the SOS? Or do you work for these folks? And so I'll end with this poll because we've been polling at these different places. Folks, for those of you that trust, trust these machines, trust them, raise your hands. These are your constituents. For those of you that distrust these machines, raise your hand. Rough approximation, we have about four people, including your clerk, that trust these machines. The people have spoken. Give them back their voice, get rid of these machines, please, we beg you. Thank you for your time. Thank you, commissioners. And if I'm calling you to action, I have to, folks, because at the same time, we're commending you. You gave us this opportunity. You let us speak. I want to thank you for that, I want to recognize that. But we're scared of what's happening to our voices, and we need you to stand in the gap, please. God bless you all. And I believe there's public comment time for folks to chime in.
On behalf of myself, before we get started, I guess on the public comment, I just want to thank you all very much for all the hard work that you put into this together and all of this data, all this information. I know that it's been very sacrificial, but I do know that you do it for the greater good, and that's to be commended and honored, and appreciate you very much.
Okay, all right, before we start the public comment, Arby's going to read these three emails, and we are going to limit emails, and we are going to limit this to three minutes, because we honestly have three and a half pages of people that want to speak, so that's going to, we're going to be here for a while.
Okay, first email says, "We, your constituents, are concerned regarding Item 2, inspection of Dominion voting tabulators, that at this late date, the commissioners questioning of Dominion's accuracy is meant not for the benefit of the citizens of Otero County, or for the sake of accurate elections. Persons with interest in undermining the public's faith in free elections are manipulating the citizens of Otero County. We are also concerned regarding Item 3, the Maggie Toulouse Oliver lawsuit, that no one has found the 2022 primary results to be fraudulent, and that authorizing this lawsuit is a waste of the taxpayers' money and of the time and efforts of Otero County government. The county has many needs to attempt to address with their limited tax base, this is not one of them. Thank you, signed Rhonda and Arthur Arlderson." Next email. "This morning, commissioners, this morning, you both had the opportunity to abide by the law, instead, we watched Commissioner Griffin bully you until you submitted to his will. Both you, Mr. Matherley, and you, Ms. Markwatt, know what the law says, listen to the county attorney you hired and follow it. The people who are making this special presentation tonight are full of bluff and bluster and partial truths. They withhold information in order to puff up their allegations of fraud. The reality is that neither homeless people nor those who serve in the armed forces are fraudulent voters, and to refer to these voters as ghost votes is horrendously shameful. The reality is that the votes were tallied accurately, and no person is serving in an elected capacity who is not elected by the people. Government only works when it's run for the people and by the people. This attempt to further undermine the democratic process should never have been entertained as long as it's been allowed, but it must certainly end tonight. I urge you to remain within the bounds of the law and accept that the reality is, we do have free and fair elections, signed Ashley Myers." Next email. "I can't believe I have to start my letter off with a geography lesson and a reminder. In the AM Commission meeting today, Koi Griffin made a case for violating New Mexico state law in regards to Dropbox removal because Nevada did it. I know the initials both have N's in it, however, Nevada law is not New Mexico law. Our commissioners swore to uphold New Mexico law, please remember this throughout the night. Koi Griffin said the commission should wait to discuss election law agenda items that our county attorney already said the county has no authority to disregard at tonight's meeting. Koi demanded his fellow commissioners wait until his political operative, a fired professor, David Clements, who is promoting his PT Barnum Act on taxpayer coin, can confuse and convince his fellow commissioners to take legal acts, giving David an opportunity to flatter or insult them into submitting, forcing them by manipulation into taking his advice over our employed practicing attorney. Perhaps Koi should have had David apply to be our county attorney if his opinion is valued more than RB's. Clements, who is an agent of Trump, even posts images of having dinner with Donald himself and Mike Lindell, not even trying to hide his bias in agenda, but will rapidly deny it, regardless of evidence contrary to his protest. I mean, seriously, if it was Hillary claiming stolen election with rigged machines, would you be wanting the auditor to be having dinner with her? You know many of you would be outraged and accusing the auditor of all sorts of crimes. Just because David is promoting your narrative, you stay silent or pat him on the back for his biased connections and motivations. We have a husband and wife team profiting off the gullibility of our community, laughing all the way to the bank, who put our county treasury at risk for their personal clout, people who will suffer no consequences for their actions when the county is sued for being bullied into doing their bidding." The Clements have either lied to you about ghost voters, were completely incompetent in their research, or omitted important info to promote their agenda with pretty graphs. They even refused to submit more than half of their alleged ghost voters to be audited or verified. The ones they did submit, research showed the majority of their data, aka assumptions, were incorrect. These are people who want you to deny the homeless in our military the right to vote, calling them ghost voters and accusing them of fraud. They also want you to make it harder, if not impossible, for the disabled and elderly in our community to vote. And their Telegram channel, David and Aaron, are even convincing citizens to engage in illegal voter intimidation, like this is a game or someone will end up getting hurt. These are not the actions of unbiased auditors. It is sickening, the county is paying for their platform, tonight's theatrical performance, to convince our commissioners to violate the law they were sworn to uphold. It's time to put this donkey show out to pasture and listen to the lawyer we pay to advise the county. Enough is enough, signed Raquel Morse."
Is that it?
Yes, that's it for the emails.
Okay. All right, the first speaker is Donna Turnbull.
Well, I know my name was not the first on the list, so I don't know how I ended up here first.
Well, I just took them in the order that they gave them to me. I don't know who was first.
Right, I was first at the top of the list, but that's okay. I was one of the canvassers. I think there started out to be about 60 of us, and we mostly worked in pairs. And I have very little to say, but I just wanted to speak for the people that bothered to answer the door. And I would say that 98% of the people that we approached were so grateful that we were knocking on their doors and verifying information. So that was very important, because they weren't all Republicans and they weren't all Democrats. They were just very caring citizens of Otero County that wanted to get to the truth. So I wanted to mention that. And in a handful of situations that I personally was involved with, I was really concerned, and so were the people that lived in those homes, that they had lived there for 25 or 30 years, he and his wife, or she, and we would just simply ask, "Do these people live in your household?" And of course, they would answer, "My husband and I have lived here for 25 or 30 years. These other people never lived here." And all we were verifying was, did they live there, and how did they vote? Not who they voted for, but did they vote absentee or in person? And they were very concerned to know why two, or three, or four other people were listed at their address. And so those people probably aren't here tonight, but those are the people that said, "Will you come back and tell us why four additional people voted from here?" They didn't know, and I didn't know, who they voted for. That wasn't what they were concerned about. They were concerned, why were those people voting for them? And would I come back and tell them? Gosh, I can't tell you how many doors I went to that people said that. It was probably less than 5%. But 5% with two or three people there, I mean, not there that were voting, that greatly changes the outcome. And after seeing the graphs and the anomalies, as far as says more than what I could tell you behind the microphone, but I can tell you, the people out there really care why that was happening. That was the most common concern, was will you find out why that happened? So maybe it's dirty voter rolls? Why, how long has it been since those have been cleaned up? I know my time's up, but thank you so much.
Lucy, is Lucy Garcia still here? I'm not sure what that says.
Just filling out.
I'm not sure. I think it's S-D-I-A-N-E-N?
Yatos Ilhika?
Shabatez Hunter.
Okay.
Riley Francis? We lose our crew. And Matt, and I never can say your last name correctly.
It's chrisilius for the record, but it's a mouthful, I understand. We are limited to three minutes, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to start off, luckily I signed up a couple times, so I'll be back up. This is a governmental meeting, correct?
This is what?
This is a government, official government meeting, right? Okay. So I'm just curious why we had to listen to about 45 minutes plus of religious zealotness and propaganda. I don't think that's appropriate. Now, hold on, I'm talking. We have rules, we didn't cover the Roberts rules. I have a backup plan for that, too. Speaking of red flags, there have been a ton of red flags, and the red flags are coming from David and Aaron Clements and their propaganda machine. We have officially requested through the county on multiple occasions, and also through to David and Aaron, for the data that supports their graphs. They have none, and they refuse to provide it on numerous occasions. I've looked at that, David, and it's all garbage. I'm talking now, Aaron. I'm talking, I'm talking. Thanks. So, Sheriff Black, didn't we cover Roberts rules and talking over, or do you want to handle it, Chairman? They've talked over me twice now.
Just go ahead and continue, Matt.
Okay, I see there's different standards. So as you will see as things unfold, and I'll be back up here, David and Aaron Clements are paid shills and propagandists. What they're doing is, this is a national program for disinformation to undermine the concept of our democracy. They are funded by Mike Lindell, and they're connected to... Yes, you are.
I'm lying.
Okay, stop talking over me, otherwise I'll have you thrown out. I can lie, I can tell the truth to counter your lies, David. That's how reality works. So it was brought up, speaking of the canvassing, it was brought up during the canvassing that there was potentially a pedophile or sex offender that people in the community identified. And he identified that he was working for the county through Audit Force. We have verified that there was a registered sex offender from here in Alamo Gordo that was on it. I can give you his name if you'd like. It's true. Okay, I'll be publishing that, then. It's not a lie. Do you want his name? I'm not a liar. So anyways, we'll be publishing that soon to verify that the county, on behalf of the county, was sending registered sex offenders door to door in an attempt to intimidate people. It's not a lie. Once again, all right, that's like the fourth or fifth time. I mean, I've been thrown out for a lot less than that. See?
Just let Matt speak, and don't respond to him. Just let him finish speaking, please.
Okay. So like I said, what you're going to see is that this is a nationwide propaganda, there's already many articles out about it, where they're pushing these lies to, like I said, disenfranchise. Is that the timer?
Yeah, it's the time.
Okay, cool, I'll be back. See you guys later.
We're just going to allow people to speak one time, since we've got quite a few people, and it's getting late. We're not going to have people just keep coming back up. That's not the way this is going to work.
That doesn't make any sense, because originally, it was going to be unlimited. And I will speak again. I will speak again.
Person to speak?
Good evening. My name is Joni Ellis, and I was a canvasser for three months. I worked with Aaron, and I couldn't believe all the stuff that I learned when I went canvassing. I lived in La Pasita Canyon, I went to La Pasita Canyon area, and there was this lady, oh, well, there's this person, center saying that they registered their vote from there. Well, I couldn't believe it, because it was two and a half acres on this place, and it was, it had, excuse me, I'm nervous, it had a fence around it, and it had like a chicken coop. No house, no nothing. Four people were supposed to be voting from there. How can four people vote from a place where there's no place there? There's a lot of places that I've been to that has been abandoned, like on Brookdale, there was two places that were abandoned, there was nobody living there, but five people were voting there. One was five, and then the other one was two. You know there has to be some kind of voter fraud. When I go canvassing every Saturday for three months, up and down roads, different places, different places I've been, and they keep on telling me the same thing. These people have never lived here, because I've lived here for five, six years, and then my brother took over, my brother originally had it, and he was there for 10 years. And nobody by that name has voted for, you know, at this address, at that, for that name, you know, at this address. So there's a lot of voter fraud, and people really need to wake up and get involved with what they need to get involved with. If you want to know the truth, go out and search for it. I did, that's how I found out what was going on in Otero County. You guys need to wake up, smell the coffee. We, the people, are first, you know? You need to start listening to we, the people, because we, the people, elected you guys to do what your jobs to do. We're behind you all the way. We'll stand behind you, no matter what happens, okay? So do your job, and do it correctly. That's all I asked for. Thank you very much.
Good evening, hello again. Mr. Griffin, on the June 13th Commission meeting, when Robin Holmes was speaking to you about the certification process, and she told you it goes through a third-party process, first words out of your mouth were, "I know, but again, that's a source we don't have any control or influence over." Why would you feel that you need to control or influence a canvasser, an audit? I don't understand that. If you are fighting for the truth, then why would you want some company coming in that you can control and influence? What these people said here tonight means nothing to me. I am not a political person, I'm really not. This is my second meeting, first one was this morning. I can't go by anything that these people say, because of the fact that they're from the far right. What is your political affiliation? What is the political affiliation of all of the canvassers? I've now seen two canvassers for the right side.
I haven't been a registered Republican. She asked me a question. She asked me a question. I have not been a registered Republican since 2016.
And what about your canvassers? What about your canvassers?
I don't know, I don't ask.
So again, is it a bipartisan? Are you bipartisan? How do you know you're bipartisan if you can't tell me the political affiliation? No, 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 of the canvassers and everyone in your little party.
We didn't ask, our only requirement for canvassers are, "Do you care about the truth?"
We didn't ask, our only requirement for canvassers are, "Do you care about the truth?" That's all. I'm an engineer, I talk about numbers, that's data.
How many of those were Democrats or liberals?
I don't ask. I said, "Do you care about the truth?" Okay, you're qualified.
And you are a Republican known...
No, I'm not.
...party? Yes, you are. If I go on the internet, I had no idea who you people were, until like two days ago, when I Googled your name.
I'm not a Republican.
First, excuse me, I am speaking!
Then stop asking us questions.
He had already answered the question, thank you.
I didn't hear it, you didn't hear my answer. I'm not a Republican, I don't know why you're saying that.
What are the political affiliations of all of the canvassers?
We don't ask that question, it's inappropriate.
Did I ask for your opinion? I asked that this man be kicked out. I asked that this man be kicked out! I will happily go! I have my three minutes! I am allowed to get up here and speak uninterrupted! I didn't ask for your opinion?
Will you please, everybody... Everybody just calm down, and let's just get back to order. We don't need to be shouting at everybody and starting all this. All right.
Separation of church and state.
Your time's up, it just rang.
So, the time that I had to spend arguing with these other people was also taken away. Thank you.
All right, the next person is John Block.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Great, well, first of all, my name is John Block, I live in Alamogordo, and I want to first just apologize to you for the way that you've been treated tonight by certain fringe extremist leftists who have no place in our county. First of all.
Everybody just calm down, just...
And so, I appreciate...
Everybody just calm down.
Okay, I'm going to reclaim a couple of minutes of my time now. So, thank you for that. I just wanted to tell you guys, thank you for standing up and being champions of election integrity. You know, I am so pissed about this issue, and that's one of the reasons that I decided to run for statewide or state office, because I'm sick and tired of seeing these politicians who, yes, are owned and operated by many of these dark money corporations, and these same people that put these election systems in our state so that they can keep power for as long as humanly possible. So, what I did was I ran against an incumbent, and I won, because I worked hard. I put blood, sweat, and tears into this campaign, and we kicked her out, because she was not doing the job she was elected to do. And so, that is why I'm here today, because I emphatically support the county commission. I believe that you should live in a county where you like your county commission, and if you don't like it, then maybe consider moving. That's just something that I would think is a logical explanation. So, I appreciate you all, and I think it's a good thing that you guys are doing to look at the fraud that did happen, that did steal the 2020 election from the American people, and it was a shame, it was a shame then, it's a shame now, and we should never stop talking about it. So, thank you, David Clements, thank you, Aaron, thank you, Mr. Lindberg, and thank you to everyone who has the voice and the power to stand up against the machine and fight back. Thank you, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Shannon Wright.
First of all, I just want to say thank you for all your hard work and what you've done. You guys have not shown any favoritism to anybody, any party or anything. You've asked for people to go out just to verify if they lived in an address, if they voted, and if they voted in person, if they voted early vote, or they voted by mail-in. Nobody asked who they voted for. I want to thank our commission for putting up with crap like that. This is America, we all should have a voice, but it should be a cop voice, it should be something that we should just speak out on civilly. I've never been so disgusted with our government as I have in my life, and if anybody thinks that this shitshow that's going on right now is good, or good for our country, I think they're living in the wrong country, and I think they probably need to leave. That's just my two sins. But, anyway, I care about my kids, I care about my grandkids, and I don't want to have to see them live through this kind of mess that we've got right now. It's pretty disgusting and sad. I'm not a good speaker, but I want to thank you all for standing up for our community, and I hope that you make the right decisions for the majority of the people. Thank you.
Rick Miller.
I'll echo, I thank you for what you've done. I thank all of the auditors, I was one of you, appreciate the time that you did, and I do want to stress that none of us were ever asked what party we're on or in, none of us ever asked what people, who people voted for, because that wasn't what we cared about. We cared about whether you voted, whether you voted legally, and whether you live at the place that you say you do. Most of the people that I spoke to at the several, a couple hundred houses I went to, were extremely kind, and were appreciative of the time we were taking to care about this country. And I just noticed that the few that were very angry and very threatening, I could guess what group they belonged to, but I didn't even try. It was just a distinct difference in how mean some people could be, and how rude some people could be versus how kind and American some people could be. That's what I'd like to see happen.
Linda Shock. You didn't sign up? Okay, you're on the list.
That, after the election, it was quite eye-popping that there was an immediate difference in the country. Many people knew something was up, and then other people were just saying, "Oh, no, it was perfect, it was perfect." I have listened to thousands of hours, okay, hundreds of hours, of election discussions, documentaries, I did watch the documentary by Mike Lindell, the man put his, is continuing to put his life on the line to tell the truth about what has gone on in this country. Dinesh Dzuza has, with Two Thousand Mules, also talked about the illegal mail-in voter boxes that Mark Zuckerberg paid for. Citizens United has a new documentary out called Rigged, on those same Zuckerberg mail-in voter boxes. Seth Keltchel, very much like your gal, that was a statistician, has done a ton of research in the steal of the election and truth of vote. These people have put their lives on the line to stand for truth, and you guys have too, and I just want to thank you for those of you that have a vote, because since the election, some of us don't have a voice anymore. If you're on a Facebook page, you can't talk about your thoughts unless you're on the left, and if you think we haven't lost our First Amendment rights, then you're on the... You just haven't paid attention. That First Amendment right for many of us is gone, so thank you for, to those of you that have a voice and are standing up for truth.
Okay, Alan Shock. Okay, so you, okay. Okay, Amy Barella.
Hi, everybody, thank you for having this meeting. Thank you, Mr. Lindberg, for your presentation, and the first thing that you said was about processes, and I'm a processes person, this is how I've been doing this. In 2016 is when I started getting my feet wet with this election process, and that is when Tulare Rosa election was changed by absentee ballots. In 2018, we know what happened over in Las Cruces, absentee ballots, E vets race was changed. In 2020, Ricky Little's race, thirty-four, I'm sorry, he was eight ahead election night, and then thirty-four ballots came in that made him lose his race, and those were all ballots without chain of custody that changed the results of his election. In 2021, the vote that was reported and on the website for the Secretary of State was not the vote, it was reported during the canvassing, and I still don't know what the difference is of those eight ballots. In 2022, my race was as a result of a recount, and we know that the machines cannot tell the intent of the voter, and it changed by one count when it was human, the human intent, we could see what that voter was trying to convey. So, the next thing I want to bring up is the ghost voters. In 2016, when I first started knocking doors, those vacant lots with registered voters, I pointed those out. In 2018, again, still had voted, still had registered voters there, and in 2020, you have proof that they voted. Those are people that need to get taken off of the rolls. In 2022, I brought names to the clerk of people that had applied for their, had their absentee ballots mailed to them, that did not apply to them, and those ballots were voted on, and I still don't know what the results of those are, too, and I have that in written proof. I would like it, yes, thank you. And then, sorry, I lost my train of thought. So, we're in this window here, where we're about to get all of these ballots destroyed nationwide, and I think we have an opportunity. What happens when all these candidates lose their races is that if you want to challenge that, the candidate has to come up with $3,200 per precinct, per day, in order to get those hand-counted. So, Mr. Clements, I realize that you've been raising funds for the GoFundMe, and I think you have a perfect opportunity here to recount Ricky Little's race. Ricky Little's race would have Donna Anna and Otero County results, you'd be able to change it, and I think that you would see that he won his election, and that would prove what you're doing is done correctly in our, and if you win, if you prove that, then you'll get your money back. So, there's that.
I just want to be clear that I don't solicit money, we don't charge. There was a GiveSendGo account that was created for me after I was terminated from my job for refusing the jab. It has nothing to do with the election work, so I'm not into the fundraising.
Regarding recounting the race, so we did recount all the ballots in Otero County, and the paper is essentially there with the errors that the machines made, which I've discussed. So, the actual, the problem is getting them in Doniana County. We've actually have requested to scan ballots over there, and we are, the IPR laws are just being blatantly violated on that side, so the chances of recounting Doniana are slim. Just answer your question.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Tracy De La Rosa.
Good evening, everyone, Commissioners, thank you for having me. I came to Otero County as a volunteer from Chavas County to help with the canvassing. I volunteer all over the state whenever I think it's needed, and if anybody from the other side would like me to volunteer and show your proof, I'd be happy to volunteer for you as well. There's one residence that I specifically remember going to, there were four people that did verify that they did live there. It was a man and his wife and two voting-age children, and they had told me for sure they knew they voted in person on Election Day. It listed two of them has not even voted at all, and two of them had voted by absentee ballot in the records. It was completely wrong. Now, this year I served as an election official in Chavas County, and I did the same-day voter registration. There were two separate instances, people having to switch their party affiliation because for some reason they had gone from Republican to independent, and they had no idea why, and they've been lifelong Republicans. Nobody was able to explain how that happened. There's definitely been discrepancies, and I really, if the other side has 500 pages of proof, I'll gladly go and sit through three hours of that evidence, too, just so that we can get what the truth is. We need that here in New Mexico in order to move forward with fair and legal elections. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your courage.
Kathy Crossley.
Good evening, and thank you for your time, thank you for what you're doing. I also am from Chavas County. I did come over and help canvas up at... Cloudcroft. And then I worked the primary, and just like they reported, 98% of the people thanked us for coming, thank you for caring. 2% were mad that we were asking any questions whatsoever. After that, I worked the primary, June 7th, and I was a precinct judge. And I had a couple come in, they were printed-out ballots, they lived together in the same house, they gave us their name, their address, we printed out their ballots. He came back, both of them came back right before closing. And so, at seven o'clock, they come see me, and he says, "We have a problem." And I said, "What?" Their ballots were different. They were given two different precinct ballots. So, I called the county clerk, I said, "This is what's happened." So, what they did was, they determined which precinct they should have been in, and so we did a provisional for the lady, but they've also determined that that's part of the Secretary of State that's on them, that they had done, our county clerk had put it in right, everything was fine. And so, anyway, I was one of the last ones coming in with the results from our precinct. When I got there, the county clerk at that precinct was still counting because theirs did not add up. There was two cities still out, Dexter and Lake Arthur, and they were on their way with their results. There was a contested judges' race. I called my friend, and I said, "This is what our county clerk is reporting. These are the very current numbers." She said, "Oh, no, the Secretary of State has already said that he has 60% of the votes and won." How does the Secretary of State get those numbers before the county clerk turns it in? Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Bordenave. You can respond to her question. You can respond to it, go ahead while everybody's still here.
Okay, a couple of items. Number one, when you said, oh, down here, I think it was, when you said that Secretary of State had the returns before the county clerk, what happens is, after the elections, the presiding judge brings in all of their supplies and everything, and that comes with a card that is brought from that machine, okay? So, those are read, you have, they usually have somebody in there reading them. So, at that point, those numbers are uploaded to the Secretary of State's office. So, that's, they go automatically onto her webpage. That's where she gets her totals, is from the cards that they've read in the office of the county clerk.
Okay, but they hadn't read mine yet, I had just turned them in. And they had not read the precinct that the, it was the biggest precinct in our county, because it was at the county clerk's office.
So, then are you saying on the Secretary of State's website that it already had your precinct populated? Because without your cards, there's no way to pop, you can't hand in or anything.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, that's why I think there's some kind of, because, and you know, unless you, did they, did you have a runner that came and got your things?
No, ma'am.
No?
No, ma'am. I drove it myself. Dexter and Lake Arthur were driving theirs themselves. It was not by a runner, it was not handed in. It was not by a runner, it was not handed in, and the Secretary of State said that these are the, these are the count.
Okay, and then again, I don't know, that probably would be something else. Something else I do know about some of the canvassers that were going out checking with people to see if they voted, a lot of the voters were confused because you guys were canvassing the 2020 general election, we had just had the 2021 election, and after talking to several people, they would say, "Oh, well, I thought they were talking about this last election." You know, "No, I didn't vote in there," or "Yes, I did." So, just to let you know, just some of the things that we've been getting back as well.
Okay, well, and, and we asked them, I asked them, I know for a fact, I would say, "Did you vote in the 2020 election? How did you vote? Did you vote absentee, or in person, or early?"
Right, and I get that, but they might have just thought, "Okay, well, this was just a 2020 election." I just, just because people have told us a lot in our office, that's the only reason. I'm not sure if that's what happened with your people, but that happened with a lot of people in our office, so that's just why I wanted to throw that out there.
Right, and I appreciate that. Our county clerk as well, I went and talked to Cindy, she said, "I don't know, I can't answer that." And I said...
Well, one thing you could have done too, is you could have checked, taken your tape totals that printed out of your machine?
I did that.
And you compare them to what's on the Secretary of State's website for, because you were at a VCC or at a precinct, a polling?
I was at a precinct.
Okay, so you can go onto that precinct, and you can compare your totals from your machine to that, to see if it matches.
And I understand that, and we did that.
Okay.
But, she still had them before we did.
Okay, yeah, then that's magic, I don't know how that happened.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, our next is Joy Bordenave.
Good evening. My name is Joy Bordenave, and tonight, I thought I was coming to a county commission meeting, but at the very beginning, it sounded like I was going to a church service. Sorry, but there is a separation between church and state, and it's inappropriate to use God in this text. There's, you won't even let us use God and pray in schools, but yet, you're going to do it in a county commission meeting, and I'm sorry, that's not appropriate. Now, a lot of people, I, I, I'm speaking, please. A lot of people tonight are talk, what, what I'm going to talk about is the Dominion machines. I was a challenger in the 2020 election. I, I was eighteen when I registered to vote, and up until two years ago, I was never really a political kind of person, but, I'm sorry, I could not stand by and just let things happen. I needed to get involved. That's why I chose to become a challenger. As I was there, I, I started off going to the warehouse, they opened up the machines, we looked to see if there was anything in the machines, nothing there, they ran the tabs to make sure everything was zeroed out. When I go, I'm sorry, I'm nervous, in the mornings, when it would show up, but to challenge, because I was there as soon as the polls opened, we wrote down the numbers every morning, wrote down what number we were starting on, and then at the end of the day, they wrote down the numbers again, so the number at the end would be the beginning number the next day. So, a lot of people saying, you know, "Can't trust, we can't trust it." I was one of the few people back here that raised my hand. I do trust the machines, I saw it. Not only did I see it, I was there when they were counting the votes at the end of the election. We were there till eleven something at night. It was both Democrat and Republicans there. Nobody was, you know, you can't say, "They did this, or they did that." The Republican candidate won the election. I don't understand the problem. I'm sorry, I don't agree with what you guys are doing. I don't believe that it's correct, that you, you're challenging this. I believe our democracy is in danger. Sorry.
John Davis?
Koi, I wear this shirt for you every single time I see you, man. Trump lost, Trump lost, Trump lost, Trump lost. Now, you don't have to like it, okay, I get that, but you and I can play a game, it can be any game you choose, and if you win and I lose, you cheated. It's that simple. I just, you know, say you cheated, okay? It doesn't work that way in elections. We have, we have tonight denigrated the Secretary of State and our own county clerk. That's, that's wrong, okay? Now, if you guys want to sue the Secretary of State because Koi Griffin says so, you're making a mistake, okay? Talk with your attorney there, see what your chances are of prevailing, they're not good. That's it, all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Marcia Sturman?
First of all, I want to thank you for having this and having it here so people could come and listen. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to canvas and be part of the auditor bunch that went out. I could think of three scenarios right off the top of my head that are extremely memorable. The first one, that we went to the very first day, there was a problem with it right off the bat. The people not only didn't want to be registered to vote in Otero County, they actually live in Missouri and wanted to be registered there, but they were still registered here. They, they were, they were lovely people, and they were frustrated because they didn't want to be registered here anymore. I can think of another one where we went to a woman the first, one day that we went, she was the first woman we went to. I remember her house, it was, and she was, came to the door, and she was by herself, and there were eight people to register, registered to vote at her home, and she lived there alone for the last ten years. And I, and I can remember some, some others that I don't want to give credence to because they were not nice people at, at the door, but by and large, most of them were so thankful, and they were so happy that we were doing this because we were trying to make the point that we're looking for the truth. The truth will come out, whether people want to recognize it, whether they want to hear it, whether they want to see it, is immaterial. It is the truth, and the truth does prevail.
I am a card-carrying skeptic, which means I don't trust anybody on either side of the political aisle. I also don't trust you until I can see your report, read it in detail, including the methodology and the raw data. I ask that the county commission post it to the website, since this, hearing tonight has been all about transparency, put it where any of us can access it and study it. No, I'm not finished yet, ma'am. This is about transparency, we must be able to access everything that was involved in this. Don't call it a private report, appreciate that you did this on your own dime and your own time, but this has risen to a level of importance in this county where we must be able to review everything. Thank you.
I could just say, the report will be online probably tomorrow, and we can get you that link. Regarding voter roll data, publishing that, you will get sued by the Secretary of State because she doesn't want you to see the raw data. She's been threatening me for using it incorrectly by just making a graph of how many people registered each day. So, I'm sorry you can't get the voter roll data. If you want, like, the ballot images or something, and you want to, me to give you the two in the thumb drive so you can do your own analysis, I'd be happy to do that.
Joan Shearer?
She's gone.
Bonnie Bernard?
Hello, I'm Bonnie Brainard, I'm from Roswell. I've been in this circus for a while, as Aaron and David can attest. I did, I did a canvassing down here one Saturday, the first Saturday, met a lovely man, had a thirty-minute conversation with him, and I knew I was in trouble when I walked up because it was "Blue Lives Live Here," Biden, Kamala. We sat there, and my brother, Michael, had a thirty-minute conversation with this man, and it was like thirty-eight degrees, we were freezing our asses off, teeth were chattering. He finally goes, "I'll put on a pot of coffee, come on in." I have not had this fun of conversation with a conservative, I don't think ever. Please come in. And I'm like, "You're number two of twenty, we've got to go." But, it was a blast. I had, I met a lot of people. After that first day, I switched to Cloudcroft because Cloudcroft had a unique situation, which I lovingly refer to twin tabulators, in that their tabulators had the exact same number of votes, the exact same number of votes run through them. Now, I'm, I'm not sure about you guys, I vote in Chavez, our county clerk only puts one machine out, so you don't have twin tabulators, so that's, that's off the books, so I don't know. But in order for that to happen, is you have to have someone standing there going, "Put it here, put it there, put it here, put it there, put it there," and never let you mix up which one you do. It can't possibly happen. You can't go to the bathroom. No, it doesn't. Anyway, I picked Cloud, Cloudcroft because, because of that, and I disagree, I've never seen that, but, okay, maybe so. There was, I was the fourth person to hit a local business who finally said, "What the hell are you guys doing? You're the fourth person to come in here? This is a business. Nobody lives here. Can I get that through your head?" And I said, "Yes, you can, but it says so-and-so lives here and voted from here." And she goes, "Why?" Again. And then I had another person that had, she had owned the house, bought it from a friend who bought it from another person, between them fifteen years, two people had voted from them absentee, and of course, her first thing out of her mouth was, "Did they vote for Trump?" And I said, "We don't ask that." Well, they better not have voted for Trump. And I said, "I don't know, it doesn't say. It says it voted absentee. I don't ask, I don't care." But, that's my canvassing. What I also want to do, and that's why I'm racing through this to get to my three minutes, is down in Chav... Shoot. Can I take Michael's? He's my brother. Michael, get up here, Michael, get up here. He's next.
He is next, he is next. On the list.
Michael, get up here. Anyway, in Chavez County, we were...
So, now you're Michael?
I'm Michael. See? I, I identify as Michael.
I don't think I can give you his time because I think we're, let him come up and speak.
Michael, get your ass up here. Oh!
Really? Yeah, I'm gonna have to call up the next, next person. Joanne Left, is that what you said? Okay. All right, well, that's the end of our list then.
Those documents for that report, where, we're gonna find a link, or how would we find out where that document's gonna be?
Thank you.
We have delivered full, bounded paper copies, but there's a PDF file. We will make sure that the Commissioners have that PDF file, and they can publish it on their website in any way that they see fit.
All right. Okay, the item number three is request approval of a lawsuit against New Mexico's Secretary of State Maggie Tellez Oliver in regards to forcing the Otero County Commission to certify a fraudulent twenty-two, 2022 primary election.
Yeah, yes, I, I had this item put on the agenda, and I think I'd first like to start out by saying that, you know, all we as a commission board, and I believe that I can speak for, for the folks that did the audit, and to so many that were involved in auditing is, is we're just looking for transparency and truth. You know, we're not trying to overturn an election, we're not mad because we didn't get our way. We're just, as a Board of Commissioners, we're just trying to serve the people of Otero County because, as we've heard here tonight, many from this county have concerns about the election and are validated concerns, and we hear so much talk about democracy is under attack, our democracy is under attack. Well, this is democracy represented tonight, where each people, each person has the opportunity to speak and your voices be heard. In regards to the, to this item on the agenda, as you all are well, well know, we were leveraged and forced by the Secretary of State to certify this last primary election, and as Vicky stated very clearly whenever she casted her vote, that she did so against her will. Like, Vicky, Vicky stated in the meeting that she didn't, still didn't feel like the election was right, but, but she voted that way because she didn't want to be removed from office, and she didn't, you know, who wants to get a felony charged against you, you know? So, the leverage from the Secretary of State was heavy on us, I believe it was very unfair, and I also believe that it was illegal. Now, that's debated by Roy, our county attorney. He says that, no, they have full well within the law to be able to do with this, do to us what they did, which I don't understand how you can be forced to rubber stamp a yes-no vote. It was a board vote, it was a yes-no vote, and we vote yes, 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 every year until the one year where we have reservations about the outcome of our election, we have concern, and so we vote no on the certification, and that's whenever all this attack came upon us, all the way to the point where it was mentioned by Representative Benny Thompson in the January 6 hearings, where Benny Thompson singled us out and talked about this commission board out in New Mexico because we had reservations about the outcome of our primary election, and we were not sure about it, but, but our reservations were proven true. The twenty-one, twenty, the, the last primary election, the 2022 primary election that we were forced to certify was not a legal or a legitimate vote tally whenever we certified that election, and I say that through evidence. I don't say that, you know, just, just saying, "I think it was." It was documented, it was not a legal or an accurate vote count, and that was proven through the recount of the District Two Commission seat, in which I currently hold, and was recounted between G.B. Oliver and Amy Borella, because in that particular race, there was three legal votes that were cast that were not counted. That was proven through the recount whenever the vote tally changed, and, and the number that we were forced to certify changed, and that's evidence in itself of, of, of the, the illegal action that I believe that the Secretary of State put against us, and that's why I have this item on the agenda right now, to file a lawsuit against the Secretary of State, and it's not because I don't agree with her politics, because Lord knows that I don't, or... or that I, you know, it's not because I have any personal agenda, personal dog in this, dog in this fight. The only reason why I want to file a lawsuit against the Secretary of State is so this never happens to another commission board again. Because what hap- Because what happened to us was un-American. It was tyrannical in every sense of the word. Whenever you're forced through threats of felonies or removal from office to certify a vote that goes directly against your convictions and your integrity and your standing and you're forced to certify a vote that later on is proven to have been a fraudulent vote count? I, I think it's, I think it's shameful and disgraceful in every way imaginable what took place. And, and if we don't take a stand and shed light on this, then it's just gonna continue to happen. And they're gonna continue doing to us what they did in the last election. And Robin, in the, in the clerk's office, gives us full confirm, full assurance after the, the primary election that there was no problems, that there was no irregularities, that everything was fine. But in the recount, that was proven to not be correct. And, and Robin, correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay, well, you're, you're right, but you're wrong. So the deal is, is first of all, there is a law in the statute that requires that if you do not certify an election between six and 10 days after an election, then they will issue a writ of mandamus. Because basically what you're doing is certifying that the election is complete. We had all the numbers there, everything matched. There was not anything that was, that you would have, you know, not certified it for. That's number one.
Sure, but let me ask you, was the vote count right? Was the vote count right at that time?
Yes, yes, it was. It absolutely was. It was right. So what ended up happening, no, there's no lies. What ended up happening was that we did a recount. We had the recount for Amy and GB. And what happened there was that the way you do a recount is you hand tally 100 ballots and then you run those same 100s through the machine, okay? So when they were ran through the machine, they got the same number. But when they were hand tallied, when you hand tally ballots, you do it differently because the machine is only programmed to fill in the bubble and to count that vote that way. When it's hand tallied, the directions through the statute is that whatever you feel the intent of the voter was, that is who gets the vote. So there were three votes that they were, one of them, they were colored in, both of them were colored in, and then one was marked out. So the poll workers felt like, okay, this was the intent of the voter for this one. There were two other cases just like that and they felt like those were the intent. So that's the only reason it changed.
If I may ask you then, by you saying this, the machine failed to count legal votes?
No, it did not.
How did it not? Whenever you count, whenever they were legal votes, but you just, by your own profession, you just said-
No, I did not.
That the machine didn't count the legal votes that were cast?
Okay, so listen, there's two ways that, that ballots are tabulated, okay? The machine is programmed to count a vote if there's only one vote in that race, okay? So if somebody spoils a ballot and they fill in both the bubbles for both the candidates, the machine is programmed not to count either one of those votes. And the machine did exactly what it was supposed to do.
It's supposed to give you an error and reject it. It's supposed to, it's supposed to give you an error and reject it according to the user's manual.
Okay, yes, absolutely it does. And at that point, if they decide they want to go ahead and push it through, all they have to do is hit cast vote. A lot of voters do that because they've already filled out this whole ballot and they don't want to go back and do it again. So they are always offered it.
What about the absentees?
We're not talking about absentees right now.
Well, I did, that's what I was showing, the exact case-
But that's not what we're talking about, though.
The exact case you're talking about, I showed like 45 of those.
But, but if I may, if I may, just step it back just a second. There was three legal votes-
They weren't legal.
Then let me finish. There was three legal votes that were cast in the primary election that were not part of the tally of the primary election that we certified, correct?
No. Okay, let, let me explain it to you one more time. The machine will not tabulate a va, a vote if both candidates are filled in. It won't. Because it can't, it doesn't know, it doesn't know what their intent was. But the rule is if they're being hand tallied and the board sees and they think that they can tell the intent, then they will go ahead and count that. That's the law.
Let me just, let me just ask it very simply for you. Did the vote tal, did the vote tally change after the certification? After we were forced to certify the primary vote? After we were forced to certify that number, did that number change?
It did.
Okay.
But that doesn't make any difference. Well, it doesn't make any difference.
It wasn't a cert, it wasn't the legal certified vote-
Yes, it was. It absolutely was.
That we were forced to certify?
It was. It absolutely was because there had been having known-
If it changed, then how was it? It wasn't the same number?
Okay, you're not gonna get it, so I'm not gonna, I'm done.
Oh, I'm sure you are done. I would be too if I was in your position. The, 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 the fact, the fact of the matter is, is that we as a board of county commissioners were leveraged by the Secretary of State and the New Mexico Supreme Court to certify an election that, that the vote count changed in. There was three legal votes that were cast by three legal voters and every vote matters. Some people might say, "Oh, it was three votes." It was three votes in a race that was decided by 11 votes, okay? And if there was three votes that weren't counted in that race, how many other races was the same? And how does that affect down the ballot? And how does that affect the big picture? Okay? I, I, again, I'm just fighting for the truth up here and I see it pretty clearly right now, that we were, we were leveraged by the New Mexico Supreme, I know, I think the Washington Post is here. Put that in your story, Washington Post. That, that New Mexico, that, that the Otero County Commissioners were forced to certify a vote that was not a legal vote. Tell Benny Thompson that up there in Washington DC if he wants to start mentioning Otero County on the national stage. Tell him, tell him to chew on that one right there. Because that's tyranny. It's tyranny whenever you're leveraged by the upper level governments to be a rubber stamp on a vote that you did not agree with and that went, goes directly against your convictions, as Vicky stated whenever she voted that evening. That she still didn't trust in the electorate, that she still didn't feel confidence in that vote. But she only voted so because she did not want to be removed from office or charged with a felony. And we were forced to, we were forced to certify that. I'm sorry, I get, I'm getting riled up. I'm sorry, I, 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 but, but it aggravates me because this should be a nonpartisan issue. This should be an issue that Democrats and Republicans, if there's anything that should bring us together, it should be the integrity of our votes because our, all of our votes matter. You know, all, all of a sudden, this turns into a partisan issue when it, it shouldn't be. It shouldn't be. It should be something that brings us together. And Roy, I'm sorry if you're over there frustrated and I'm sorry if you're upset and I'm, I don't know if you, if you hate everything that I'm saying over here, but I think we have to start fighting back on the county level. You know? If, if we don't, then we get run over by the state. We get run over by the Fed. We, 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 we have to represent the people that are here that have valid concerns about our electorate. And I don't see any other way but to, but to, to file a lawsuit, not on the, not on the grounds of, as Robin just clearly explained to us, how we, we have to do it because those are the election laws. That's not what I want to file a lawsuit on. I want to file a lawsuit on the fact that the Secretary of State made us, made us certify, leveraged us to certify a vote that was not a correct or accurate vote because there was three voters from, from District 2 that didn't have their votes counted in that vote and we were trying to fight for those voters.
Robin, let me ask you something. Would you please come back up? What would have happened to those three votes had we not done that recount, that hand recount? They would not have been counted, is that correct?
They would not have because they weren't properly marked on the ballot. And that's why people are instructed to vote the way they do, to fill in the bubble, only vote for one candidate, and if they do make a mistake, to come back and spoil the ballot and get a new one. Just not everybody wants to do that.
But they were counted, correct?
They weren't counted originally until they did the hand tally.
I know, but they were counted after the recount.
Yes, absolutely.
But that means that we deemed those votes to be legally cast votes. We declared those votes in the recount-
Right, but this happens all the time.
To have been legally cast votes and those legally cast votes were not counted in the tally that we were leveraged and forced to certify. It's clear.
Robin, when those, when the vote results are posted, those votes show up as undercounts, correct?
Yes.
And so-
They're undervotes.
There are two options to get a recount. A candidate can see that in their race, there are undercounts, so they know that there are potentially votes that were not counted because people filled them out incorrectly. So they could request a hand recount. Or when it's within 1% margin, where things like that could matter, the process dictates that there's an automatic recount, which is what happened in this, and those votes were looked at because it is less than 1% and it matters. That's the only way to, to deal with this when people aren't gonna fill out a ballot correctly or take the effort to correct it once they're notified that it was filled out incorrectly. This is an example of the process working.
I just, I, I have to say this right now. I love how technical and to the letter of the law you all selectively choose when to really dial in and drive out, but we can give you a three-hour presentation and we be, be met with absolute silence.
Also, these machines were sold to us for millions and millions and millions of dollars. And in the, in the manual, it says, "Votes just like you're describing will be counted correctly because the machine will alert you." In absentee, there's absolutely no reason that those ballots shouldn't be counted correctly. And we found 45 that weren't counted correctly. And you've got a race decided in that election by something like 11 votes. So the fact is, we are being misled by Dominion. They're making mistakes they shouldn't make. The errors are higher, far higher than they're allowed to be by law. Those are the machines that you're using.
No, the same thing happens in absentee. If they put the ballot in and it's overvoted and it's, and it's sent back out at that point.
These are the people you serve.
Thank you, and I know that. Thank you very much.
And regarding the overvotes, when I showed you, fold marks are being counted as overvotes. And your, your staff didn't ca, those are absolutely absentee. That means the programs, that means the machines are programmed absolutely incorrectly to count right in votes.
Well, I just don't know how you know that, that the fold is being counted as a vote, I guess. How would you know that?
It should have been hand tallied and it was, it was stuck through the machine.
Well, that's up to the board. That's not up to me. I don't touch ballots. We hire in, election boards and they make that determination.
No, it's not. Just like it's not up to this board because they'll be, they'll be compelled to certify something.
Okay, thank you, but I wasn't talking to you.
It's an illusion.
Okay, I was talking to Aaron.
It's an illusion. They don't have a choice. That's the problem.
Okay, it's a law.
You're so selective in the choice.
It's a law. They didn't have a choice because it's a law.
No, the law does not say that. The law was incorrectly stated. And I'm tired of this.
Okay.
I'm tired of this.
Are you done with me, Commissioner Markworth?
Yes, you think you-
I think the people, I think you should resign.
Thank you, Robin.
I think you should resign. You need to resign. You need to resign.
Dave, that, you're out of-
It's disgusting how you fight the people.
David, Dave, you're out of line. I don't, that's not right. Everybody needs to just take a breath, calm down.
You know, to this item that's on the agenda, my point would be that the state legislature is, who put the law in place that required you to certify the election? So it's not, it, there's no basis to sue the Secretary of State.
And that's not, that's not what, that, as I said just a second ago, Roy, that's not why I had this on here because of the, the, what you just said right there, the legalities of the certification. What I put this on here for was because they forced us to certify a vote that was not the right tally. The number changed. That's why I, I, I feel like a lawsuit is warranted. Because if we don't, then they just, they, the next time it comes around and we have reservations again and we, you know, and then they just force us to do it again and, and it's, it's tyr, it's tyranny and, and it's a, it, it's not right because again, it's, it's three votes. Three votes in a race, again, mind you, that was decided by 11. But there was three votes in this race, how many in the other races? How, how, was there three or 30 or none? You know, we, we won't ever know until we get rid of the Dominion tabulators and hand count paper ballots. Period. It's the safest way.
It's not a yes or no vote. You're, you don't have, no is not a consideration in the vote. It, it doesn't make sense, but that's the way the law is written, that's what the law is, is your job's to certify it. You don't have the discretion to consider whether it's valid or not.
But it was proven to not be valid. It was proven. It's, it's, it, this, all this unsubstantiated, no evidence of voter fraud, we found it in a simple recount in the District 2 race between Amy and GB. It was proven right there.
It's the process working is what it is. That's what a court would say, is that is the process and how it's meant to work.
Made a decision before we even fought. You don't even fight. You don't even file a lawsuit. You have the right to file a lawsuit.
I'm not gonna file a frivolous lawsuit, David. I have a good faith basis.
It's not frivolous. What are you listening to?
I, I disagree with your interpretation. New Mexico Audit Force is free to take this and try and get it into a court of law, but you're not doing that. You're asking these commissioners to put their livelihood on the line and their careers is, in this job as commissioners, you're asking them to put everything on the line and you're not putting it on the line.
What I'm saying is they're not doing their job because they're being threatened. That's what I'm saying.
That's not their job. They're not, they're not supposed to do that here.
I'm willing to put everything on the line.
The way it's written is they certify it. There's no, no consideration.
It's tyranny. And you're, and you're, and you're a rubber, you're not, you don't help them. You don't help us. You don't fight. You just do whatever the Secretary of State tells you to.
I'm following the law as I see it, David.
Yeah, written by Dominion.
Who is responsible, per the Constitution, per the Constitution, who is responsible for determining the procedures and processes of elections?
You don't know because they're probably selected. The people that you're relying on are being selected by machines.
What does the Constitution say about who determines the procedures and processes?
All I know is what the Election Code says about certifying post-election results and that's their power. Their power alone. And you've been told, you've been told by the Secretary of State, they don't have that power. Read the plain text.
I read it for myself, what it says. Shall certify-
Then why is it a yes-no vote?
Shall certify, it doesn't give you a yes or no determination.
Then why, why do they give us the opportunity to vote on it? Why do, why do we even have a place at the table if we can't vote no?
You don't really have a place at the table.
Why do we even have the opportunity? It needs to be complete. So we own the fraud and they don't? Is that why? They, 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 they make it a yes-no vote and they force us to vote yes, yes, yes? So whenever it all comes fraudulent and all the truth's known, then they can sit back and go, "Well, you guys are the ones that certified it. See, you voted yes on a yes-no board vote." And then we own the fraud. I'm not gonna own the fraud. That's why I voted no to, to begin with.
And RB, it only says shall certify after they do an investigation. If there's any omissions about the official returns, you don't certify that. There's a process in the law that this is what we're doing.
They're not the ones making the determination if there's an issue or not. That's on the clerk. It's written for the clerk to make that. It's written for the clerk to make that assessment. If the clerk says it's good, then it says they shall certify it. That's how it's written.
It's not how it's written. They have a part in this.
They don't. They changed it. The legislature changed it.
Why did Alex Curtis announce that they are going to go back to the legislature this coming session and change it, if it's already as clear as you say? They don't have to change it if it's clear. It's not. And the board says they can ask for corrections if it's not correct on the face of the return. If it's clear, they don't need to change it, do they?
Change what? I'm sorry.
Alex Curtis, he discussed this. There was a quote from him in some article, that they are going to go back to the legislature this coming session and change the language that's there now to take away their power to say no.
They already did that.
He essentially said that. No, they didn't. A right, no.
That was done in 2019.
He just said it a couple weeks ago.
This was just put through on a CNN article. Our interpretation of the law is clear. That's why they have to rush to the legislature to change it.
I disagree.
But if we don't have, if we don't have a say, if we can't vote no, then why give us the opportunity to vote no? I mean, that's the most foolish thing I think I've ever even thought of, is you don't have a say, you can't, you have to do it, but yet we're going to give you the opportunity to vote yes or no. It just, it just doesn't make sense.
We got someone else.
We got some votes. Okay, well, it's up to you.
Okay, which one were you up here first?
She was first.
Okay, three minutes.
Okay. I have a question now, because I didn't realize there was a sheet to sign up on, because you guys didn't tell us that at the beginning of the meeting. So, I didn't know I had to sign up, so that's why I raised my hand. But I was at the meeting where you guys chose not to certify, and there were at least two of you that had questions about the fact that there weren't facts to prove that it was fraud. You'll have to go back and check your minutes, but I was there. And so, you, you even had doubts at that point as to whether there was fraud. And now, after you have these people come in and speak, you're making a different kind of assertion on an election that was duly lawful because it follows the laws of the process. Now, you don't have to agree with me, just like I don't have to agree with you, but if you're talking about taking our county's money to sue for something that you guys weren't even sure at the time, because you didn't state that you had facts to prove it was a fraud or illegal election, but you want to sue now to prove that it was after the fact?
Yes, ma'am, but we didn't know at that time that it was not a legal election.
It was a legal election.
We were told, no, but in the recount, the vote tally changed, okay? That happened after the vote. That happened after they forced us to certify the election. Then the recount happened, and then the vote tally that we were forced to certify changed.
But you see, that's what a recount is for, is to catch votes that might not have been counted, because there was, it was so close, so you found that after the fact. But that does not make the election illegal.
It changes the original vote tally.
It did change the vote.
Yes, ma'am.
But it was legally done.
No, it wasn't legally done.
Yes, it was.
I don't, I don't follow you. I'm sorry. Thank you, though.
To call the vote.
She said, "Call it."
You don't, you don't chair the commission board chair, sorry.
Robert's rule says this is a waste of time.
But, but, um, we'll have order. But, but I just, I don't know, I mean, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to sue the Secretary of State for nothing, but this is a big issue right here. This was, this was a very strong overreach that, that they forced us to certify a vote count that we told them openly, first by voting 3-0, not to certify. So, that meant we were all in favor, and then whenever it came, Gerald voted for it, but Vicki clearly stated during the meeting that she did not agree with it, and she didn't agree with the way the Secretary of State was handling her, but the only reason why she voted was because she didn't want to be removed from office, because she wanted to continue to fight for the people up on the mountain. So, Vicki wasn't, Vicki, Vicki didn't want to vote, Vicki did not want to certify that vote. And then come to find out, the vote wasn't the right vote. The number changed. How it changed, why it changed, what the machine did, what it didn't do, whatever. The fact of the matter is, is there was three legal votes that were cast that were not included in the tally that we were forced to certify. That's it simply. It's simple.
Yes, sir.
Yes. I don't know the letter of the law, so I don't really know if the vote was legal or not legal, but I do know, I'm hearing abuse of power from this state. And that in and of itself is a warranted lawsuit. Coercion and abuse of power. That's all I got to say.
And the only way to, the only way to stop coercion and the abuse of power is through a lawsuit. The only way I see it, it's sure enough not going to be by writing a letter, just asking the Secretary of State, "Please don't do it to us again," you know? I mean, I don't see any other way.
Commissioner Matherley, you have anything? RB, you want to make any comments?
Not beyond what I've said unless you have specific questions. My advice is that it would be a lawsuit without merit.
What kind of money would this cost the county? Do you have any, I mean?
If we do it in-house-
That can be put to a vote at any time, too. Takes two commissioners, so we can do that.
You guys, just, everybody, keep calm.
Probably easily $100,000 or more. That's ballpark for any litigation. But again, I don't think the Secretary of State would be the appropriate person, because the rule that Commissioner Griffin's taking issue was passed by the state legislature and put into place.
No, the issue that I'm taking is not the rule by the state legislature. The issue that I'm taking issue with is, as the gentleman just said, an abuse of power. You know, it's, it's by forcing us to certify a vote that was not the right vote. That's what I'm taking an issue with.
And I would add an additional claim that's easy for this lawsuit, is what I proposed at the very beginning, which is a writ of mandamus that you file for an order for the Secretary of State to not, to have to certify these machines because they're not in compliance with the Election Code. And that's clear as day, but there's absolutely, we're met with silence. We had Commissioner Jay Block, who had the same contention and had the right vote in Sandoval County. Why, why don't we have 33 counties saying, "Look, the law as written acknowledges that that has to happen?" And there has not been any proof provided by Robin or anyone else regarding the fact that we're not up to date with the most recent election assistance standards, and the law requires it. Why isn't that a lawsuit that's been filed?
Well, that's a separate issue that is not on the agenda right now.
Yeah, that's what I talked about. Civility, right? Civilization. We're just beating the hell out of the honor of men right now because we can't have an honest discussion about the truth. Nice pivot.
Sure. Three minutes. But go to the microphone so we can hear you.
My name, sorry about that. My legs got tired sitting there. My name is Brad Reinkie. I'm from Nebraska, and just had a very wonderful drive with a man that I appreciate, didn't know before, two days ago. There's a higher judge in this room. Some don't want to talk about him. But that higher judge, we have to vote to conscience. If we're voting to conscience, that's smart, but ultimately, we answer to the audience of one, and that's why I want to make sure that you guys do what's right. I have to work with hearts of people on a daily basis that struggle from early years to now. A day ago, excuse me, a week ago, a woman considering suicide because of the garbage that's going on in America right now. The enemy's loose, and we got to get him reined in. So, let's, let's do this according to God, and it's by, we are governed by the consent of the governed. We are the governed. And at some times, for the state, I think we have to say, "No, you're out of line. You're going overboard." Thank you.
The way I feel about this is, I don't want to waste the county's money filing a frivolous lawsuit, and I don't think that we have a chance of winning this one. However, I would like to pursue the other lawsuit. I mean, it's not on the agenda right now, but I think that we would have a better chance, since the machines haven't been updated like they're supposed to by law. That is in the law. I would rather do something that I think we have a chance of winning.
Vicki, if I could just say that you can also prove at this point that they make error rates well in excess of allowable by law, and we can show you, I mean, we have it now. It's audited. It's even in her own reports. So, that's another thing you can add, add to that, just so you know. And it isn't programmed incorrectly. I can show you where the EAC says it cannot, it has to tell the difference between a vote and a fold. It can't. And they're programmed incorrectly to count write-ins. That means every write-in race in this state is in question also. So, all of those things would, I think, are very compelling, and you have the proof.
The beauty of a lawsuit is you can articulate many claims. So, maybe the other commissioners don't feel as strongly as Coy, but if we're talking about cost efficiency in a lawsuit, it's just one pleading. You can have multiple causes of action, multiple claims, and maybe you'll prevail on his, maybe you won't. But there are many arguments that can be asserted to give you all back your voice and your conscience. I mean, I think the point that Commissioner Griffin's making is clear, is that your conscience is being bound, and you're making decisions that have no relationship to the merits. It's because there's a fear in the air. There's a duress that we're hearing about, and it's like we're already looking at the possible outcome without fighting. And this is just, it's not that difficult. It's one lawsuit, three claims.
As the agenda item can be amended, that we vote on right now, just a general, to request approval of a lawsuit against New Mexico Secretary of State Maggie Toulouse Oliver, and then we can add the substance and the gist of the lawsuit later, but I think that it's time. I think we have to. I think we, if we're ever to get our voices back, I think this is a move to go.
RB, can we do that?
As far as amending the, you can amend the agenda item.
Absolutely.
And we can explore potential avenues of lawsuit. It's still, my assessment is it's going to be in New Mexico court, and we're not going to Fairwell, but whatever the commission wants to explore as far as other avenues of suit or causes of action, we can start the process of looking into that with an approval tonight, and then discuss it at another meeting, the next meeting.
We can amend this, this agenda item as it stands right now, just to include request approval of lawsuit against New Mexico Secretary of State Maggie Toulouse Oliver. We amend this agenda item to that right there. We vote on it right now. We agree that this is a direction that we're going to go. Then we sit down and we get the gist of the lawsuit together.
All right. This is how I'm kind of looking at this. The representative is the one that created this law and stated it. The SOS Secretary of State is strictly doing her job to uphold what the representative of the state law says. That's in the book. To sue her is going to be a waste of time in my eyes, because she was strictly doing her job. The ones you need to be going after is to go after the representatives to get this law changed to where it's not reading law.
She's the certifier, and you're, we're stuck with the same machines. It's the circle, it's this circular chicken and the egg dance. You're thrusting this to a political body where you have absolute control by one party that wants these machines here.
And this is counsel from a law professor as well. It's not just, you know, David's a professor of the law. He knows what he's talking about.
And the statutes are clear that the Secretary of State is the one who certifies the machine, Commissioner Matherley.
Well, that's, he was talking about-
I know he was, but if we're talking about multiple issues, she's certainly culpable for certifying the machines, and for trying to pass off a test report from 2011 for a, for a system that has no, bears no resemblance to what it did in 2011, calling that certified. That's her job. So, that's perfectly in her realm of, I mean, that's not the legislature.
Not, not, it depends on how much it changes the agenda item.
But we've amended agenda items. It's not adding to.
So, re-say what they're trying, what they want to do, so I make sure I understand.
They're wanting to consider multiple causes of action to sue the, to sue the Secretary of State under multiple actions, one being-
One action, not multiple actions. One action, multiple causes.
Multiple causes of action, yes.
But it's one lawsuit.
Yes. The voting certification.
And error in the machines.
Take it to a vote?
Okay, I'm going to make a motion for the approval of a lawsuit against New Mexico Secretary of State Maggie Toulouse Oliver.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Okay, moving on to item number four. Okay, moving on to item number four. We're going to discuss and reconsider a vote to remove drop boxes, remove voting machines, and hand count ballots. And this is on here because back when we voted to do this, now Coy's bringing it up again.
I submit it.
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Roy's the one that put it on there, and it was after we got a letter from the Attorney General Hector Baldaros threatening us pretty much over this item right here. And this item right here is the opinion of the county commissioners. This is what we want to see happen. If it happens or not is going to take more than just us saying this is what we want to see happen. You know, what Hector Baldaros did through his letter to our commission board is he wants to take our voice and our opinion away from us. He doesn't want us to have to stand on a unified position like this, that we want to remove the drop boxes, that we want to remove the voting machines, that we want to hand count the ballots, all the things that I believe and probably 95% of the people here believe is going to give us just more security in our elections. But I say we stand on our resolve. I say we stay the course in this. You know, we're entitled to an opinion as county commissioners. We can stand unified on what we want to see happen in Otero County without the threat of Hector Baldaros and the Attorney General threatening us with what? To not have an opinion anymore? To not stand up for ourselves anymore? He wants to come in with the leverage of the Attorney General's office and say, you guys can't say that? No. We stand on this, and what's he going to do? You know? Censor us?
The vote wasn't an opinion. It was a vote to remove the boxes, a vote to remove the machines, and a vote to conduct a hand count ballot. If you changed it to express your belief that the boxes shouldn't be used, that the machines shouldn't be used, that a hand count is the appropriate measure, that'd be different.
It's not the same thing as an ordinance, but the resolution...
It wasn't a resolution either.
Well, there's... Those are the three agenda items that we were there, right? And so what was the nature of it then?
What was that again?
What was the nature of the vote before then?
Before?
Legally, in your opinion.
Legally, it couldn't be done, but the intent is still there.
They voted.
What?
But they voted.
They voted to do those things, but they're not under their control.
But you haven't litigated that. You're just going with...
That's my interpretation of the law, David. I'm entitled to my interpretation, just as you, as a professional, have your interpretation of the law. Lawyers have different interpretations of the law every damn day, and that's why they go to court and litigate shit.
But that's my point. You don't ever want to go to court and litigate anything. That's my point.
No, I have an assessment of what the law says, and I provide my opinion to my clients.
Which is always to avoid any confrontation with these tyrannical thugs.
Because I'm trying to...
All you do is sit up here and try to talk people out of doing anything for your constituents.
And usually, the advice ends up being the correct advice and what should have been followed.
We're enslaved. Welcome. We're enslaved. That's what your advice is leading to.
Go file a lawsuit yourself. Put yourself and your money on the line.
We have been, RB. He's lost his career. You know how many hours I spent on this? How much of my life do I have to give up before you help?
I know, but you need to take it to court. None of that will get into court, and that's the problem.
Solid evidence to pursue this.
None of that will get into the court of law.
Those machines are legal six different ways, based on this, which I have poured my, I don't know, eight months into. Is that enough for you to take it and do something with it as an official who works for these people?
It's not going to pass muster.
The difference between David and Aaron and us is we represent the people. We represent the people that are sitting out here right now. They, you know, I mean, you say, you go file a lawsuit. We're supposed to be the one...
We're kind of busy. I mean, that's... Have you not seen what we produced, RB? Does this sound enough?
I see that you produce things.
We gave you a legal memorandum that you didn't write. I didn't charge anyone for that. How much free work do you need before you can do something?
I didn't ask for that legal memorandum.
You're asking me to file a lawsuit now. Maybe I have to.
You can.
But they can also vote.
I can provide advice to my clients and on a basis of what I believe is in the best interest of the taxpayer and my clients, the commissioners, and that is my opinion.
Your taxpayers don't have a voice. These are the taxpayers.
They're not the only taxpayers in the county.
These are the taxpayers, and when your legal advice seems to mirror...
There's a whole county of taxpayers.
When your legal advice seems to mirror the Secretary of State's every single time, that's a problem.
It doesn't always mirror hers.
It sure looks like it on elections.
First of all, this isn't getting into an arguing...
Everybody just take a breath, chill out.
David, please.
No. Gerald, you gave us your word, and you've changed it.
What do you mean, I gave you my word?
What does you... Does a yes mean yes, or does it mean...
Okay, what we're considering here is to reconsider how to rewrite this so it's not going to throw us all in jail. That's why it's rewriting the whole...
And why are you scared of going to jail? Who's threatening you with jail time? That's our point.
There'll be order in the back, David. Mr. Sheriff Black, if you can, please.
You guys are scared of going to jail. That's the whole point. Why?
What are they gaining by risking jail on this?
Representing their constituents.
They can do that other means than don't send them to jail and get them removed from office. The legislature controls the elections and election codes. They are constitutionally charged with that. Oh, and we can petition the legislature to change? You should be petitioning the legislature with your presentation.
I'm petitioning you.
It's not the county's role. It's not the county's role.
Okay, so let's just be clear. You guys got a bunch of rubber stamps. Just say it out loud.
The county has certain roles and responsibilities. It's spelled out in the Constitution and the statutes, and that doesn't include what you want it to include. I'm sorry, it doesn't.
It's supposed to be by the people, for the people, not by the government, for the government. You know, and the people want... I think the people are behind us. I think the people of Otero County are behind us in this effort.
Coy, all I need is to give you my advice, and you don't have to listen to it.
Absolutely.
So I've given you my advice.
Yes, sir.
And then you're free at any moment to get a new attorney, too.
Yep.
Mr. Nichols, the legislature actually declined to make drop boxes mandatory. So that's absolutely within their jurisdiction to say, we don't want them in our county. Because they're not... The legislature declined that specific question, and they said they didn't vote on that when it was right in front of them.
They require the clerk to use...
Drop boxes. They're not... Nobody's required to use them. It's a rule. It's not a statute, which means they have authority to say, not in our county. So to have the Attorney General say, just because you voted on that in a thing we're going to threaten you because of how you worded it, when you do have the authority to get rid of drop boxes by ordinance now, just the way you have the authority... Yes, you do.
I disagree.
It's not statutory. It's not in the statutes. Okay, so...
There's no statute on the... You've got an entire society that's being ruled by executive order, which deprives, under the Constitution, the legislature of their appropriate purview. And if you can't point to a statute on drop boxes, then you don't have the legal authority to even assert that. Where's the statute? There isn't one until the next session, and then they'll create one.
It's in there. They may clarify it and make it more explicit, but it says that the clerk will use them.
It does not say that. It mentions secure containers, just like it mentions voting convenience centers. You don't have to use voting convenience centers. The secure container was brought to us by Mark Zuckerberg with third-party partisan money. How are we okay with just letting them do that because they're mentioned in the statutes? It does not say they're mandatory. And besides that, we have the Lincoln County clerk negotiate with the Secretary of State to only put out one instead of two. If she can negotiate away one of us...
Because it says they can negotiate it.
And Lee County put out zero. And Sierra County put out zero. You can say no.
I'm not aware of that.
Yes, ma'am.
I know I already talked. Do these people sitting at this table have more right to speak up anytime they want to than I do? That's what I'm asking. These people out here are telling me I already spoke, and I don't have the right to speak. But these people are arguing their case to you guys against your own attorney's advice.
We will fight every day for freedom on this issue.
But you have no more right than I have.
We will fight every two weeks, every commission meeting. Take a picture right now. This is at the end. Until you get rid of these machines, you can expect us to see you every two weeks.
Sir.
Everybody settle down. Good grief.
Robert's rules, sir.
No, I'm not going to settle down because I've got three young children that I'm going to preserve a vote for.
If he is not going to settle down when you asked him to, why is he not thrown out?
I'm not a child to be scolded.
I want them all to settle down a little bit.
Sheriff Black, if you will, please.
But he's allowed to speak? Anytime he can just jump up? Is he on your list? No, no. You had a presentation that gives you no more right than the rest of us folks in this audience. But then you need to be raising your hand like I have to, not jumping up and inserting your beliefs on our county commission. Then the rest of us can stand up and do that, too, without being thrown out.
And you have been, ma'am. We've allowed you the opportunity to speak. You've been speaking.
Well, I am speaking, but he is arguing with me, yelling at me when I'm trying to speak to you.
Well, you're speaking right now. Nobody's yelling at you. But this is... I mean, as chaotic as this is, maybe it looks, this is... I think this is... This is healthy. This is what America was built on, to be able to have the right to be able to go back and forth.
Okay, so...
You know? I don't agree with Matt yelling from the back of the room.
But you just asked him to be thrown out. He yelled at me from the stage. So what is the difference? Okay, my... What I wanted to talk about before I was rudely interrupted is that there are laws.
Yes, ma'am.
And you have a lawyer that is trying to consult you on the laws.
Sure. Legal opinion.
Right, but he is your attorney, is he not?
But he's got a legal... He's got an opinion. We're the ones that have the vote. We're the ones that make the decision.
Exactly. But these people over here can't argue. They can stand up and give their opinion.
Yes, ma'am.
But they don't get to do it any more often than the rest of us.
Well, there are invited guests here, and they gave the presentation, and they've done the work in the audience.
And so they can attack your constituents?
No, ma'am.
They've been doing it.
We're hearing you out.
We have the right. I am a God-fearing woman.
Yes, ma'am.
I go to church with Mr. Matherly. So to get up here and say that the rest of us are not... Don't count that the fact that we, too, no matter what party I am, it does... That should not impact what you guys decide as our county commissioners based on the law.
Yes, ma'am. And I'm sorry that you... If you felt like your voice hasn't been heard tonight, or we didn't give you the respect enough to speak.
That man didn't.
You've handled yourself very courteously, and we appreciate you for that, very orderly. And you've come up to the microphone, and you've said your piece, and we appreciate that.
Can we get the same from everybody else?
Well, I can't control everybody else. There's others out in the crowd that have spoken out, too.
But others in the crowd don't get to attack.
Nobody's attacking you right now? Nobody's speaking?
Not right now, but you didn't handle it when he did.
Okay, well, I'm sorry about that.
Yes, sir.
You know, I got a question, you know? You've gotten letters of threats. You've gotten verbal threats. Perhaps other counties have also gotten these letters of threats and verbal threats. Perhaps you can make it a class-action lawsuit with other counties cohesively and save some money and time and put more pressure on the upper people who give the threats.
Good idea. I agree.
I struggle a little bit, too. I think the whole reason most of us are here is for our children and our grandchildren. We want them to have freedom in years to come. And what's... My struggle in the state of Nebraska is the very same as it is here. I want... I'm having to spend my savings, my children... Maybe possibly something my children would have gotten for an inheritance, to fight for... Against my taxes to get what's right for my children and grandchildren. I'm having to spend my own money to deal with that. We're driving all over the state of Nebraska, again, trying to help find the truth, get the truth out. And it just doesn't seem fair that I have to spend my money to fight against my taxes.
Did you want to say something?
I still feel on this is that we need to reword it because we have no authority to do this. The drop boxes are a state mandate law. I'm not a big fan of the drop boxes, but it's still... It's still a mandated law.
Where is it mandated at, though, Gerald?
It's a tail end handle.
Is it... Can you read the statute, Roy? Where we're mandated? Because I want to follow the law, too. I mean...
All right, so it says the official mailing envelope may be returned by depositing the official mailing envelope in a secured container made available by the county clerk to receive voted mail ballots for that election. And then it goes into describing the location and the requirements of it to be secured. One tech, six tech, nine.
Tech can. Now find where it says voting convenience center, and note that you don't have to use voting convenience centers. It will say, voting convenience center shall be this and this and this and this. It doesn't mean you have to use them. That's why there was a law before the legislature in January where they had an opportunity to make them mandatory, and they declined. It had the language that would have made them mandatory, and they didn't vote on that.
The Attorney General has provided an opinion that disagrees.
It's his opinion. That's an opinion again. It's not a statute. There's a big difference.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean that they're not going to pursue arresting the commission if they believe that they violated the code and they believe it is mandatory. That's their interpretation, and all the courts are going to agree with it.
If it's mandatory, did the Secretary of State commit a crime by telling Lee County, by telling Lincoln County, you can use... by telling Lincoln County you can use one instead of two? Did she commit a crime by failing to make Lee County put those out or Sierra County?
It's in the administrative rules that they can request an exception that's in the rule.
It's a rule. You just said it, not a statute. That's right.
There's the statute and then there's the rule that supports the statute.
Statue's not mandatory. There's not, it's not mandatory in the statute.
And you also have secure containers that are in existence. I think they're called U.S. Postal Service boxes, which were not for, but that actually satisfies the plain language of the statutes without adding more of these drop boxes, courtesy of Zuckerberg with his corrupt, far-left money with no surveillance whatsoever. And you've got commissioners that have actually watched the 2000 Mules documentary and then you just heard from an expert talking about proof here in Otero County of ballot stuffing.
If I could point your attention to the 850 ballots in this county in 2020, which had no chain of custody, they weren't delivered through the post office, they were not in the Dropbox records. Okay? That is because of drop boxes. Your, and that was exactly the number that the statistician came up with as far as stuffed ballots and absentees was 850. They're undermining your elections. If you can't even say we're not going to have them in our county and you're, just because of a threat from some goon with an opinion, when by their own paper trail, they know they're not mandatory or they wouldn't try to be making them mandatory.
I understand Gerald's position. I'm just trying to keep my commissioners out of jail.
We appreciate that. So can we do, can we do an appeal to, to remove the, the drop boxes? Is that allowed?
You're, yeah, you're able to express an opinion that you believe that they should be removed and they shouldn't be used. It's fine if it's an opinion. The, the issue they're taking is that you voted to remove them and they see that as action to violate the code. But requesting that they, that they, that the legislature change it or, yeah, that's fine.
The legislature has ruled and that's our point. You're, you're referring to a rule which is not mandatory for this commission to follow. It's not a statute. And you are a local body that makes law concerning your jurisdiction, your county. And in the absence of a statute, you are the lawmakers. That's the point.
Well, we actually don't make laws. We do ordinances and resolution. You know, so it's. Oh, I'm sorry.
Denise Gara, the Chief Deputy County Clerk. Can you hear me now?
Mm-hmm. We can hear you.
Okay. Robin and I have laid this foundation for the county clerk's office for 38 years. We have always been transparent, honest. We've been there for Democrats, Republicans, for everybody. I don't appreciate how she has been treated tonight or any other time in the other meetings. I do not appreciate that because we have been there and we have worked hard for the Otero County residents and voters of Otero County. And I don't appreciate the way she has been treated. She deserves an apology. Vicky, you should have spoke up when you were at that recount, how honest we were, how of, you do not speak up, Vicky. And I don't appreciate that because you saw how organized we were, how efficient we were, how hardworking we are and everything, how it came out.
And I agree.
Speak up sometimes, Vicky.
You guys did a great job at the recount. And I agree. You did. You did a great job.
This thing with the drop boxes, I've provided, you know, the rules. I don't want you to be scared, ma'am. That is so disrespectful. You know that? All these so-called Christians in this room, you want to pray at the beginning and, and God this and God that. I'm a Christian too. But the way you all act, you don't act like a Christian. And you know what? You all can act the way you want, but our office is still open to you all at any time. We're there to serve you and to be there for you at all times.
Denise, I, I, I apologize if I've been offensive and I'm, I apologize if I've personally offended you, but I just, I'm just, I, I just want to make sure that our electorate is safe and secure. And I don't think that we can be too careful nowadays, especially with the modern technology and everything, how things can be, you know, we can, we can, we can be dumb to things, especially technology, you know, and so.
Coy, I understand that.
Please don't take it personally.
No, I understand what you're saying. But you know what? It's a personal thing with you. And you see how our office is. I have served on the voting machines certification committee. I know and I've have spoke before in the county commission meeting. I've asked you all if it's so, those machines are so concerned, go to the records that were submitted by Dominion. And I printed out a list of the certification that was presented to the Secretary of State's office. I gave it to the attorney. I have other copies. I'll give it to you. But you know what, Coy? It's a personal thing and you know it. But you know what? It's us. It's the county clerk's office that's getting dogged out and that's not right.
But, but it's Dominion, it's Dominion that, it's Dominion that I don't trust, Denise. And I don't trust, and I don't trust Dominion because Dominion did not give us an accurate vote count in the District Two primary race. And what, how many of the other races were not accurate vote counts as well? That's the only one we know of because that's the only one that was recounted.
Coy, you served on very, you, you served on other canvases. We presented to you the, all the results from each polling location. You knew in the past that you would select different polling locations to go through those results tapes and those signature rosters or whatever we had there for you, the canvas. On this last election, you did not do that. Why?
Why?
Why? And now you're wanting to fight about it? But you didn't take the time at that canvas to look through all the results? Come on, man.
Because I don't understand it, Denise. I don't, I don't understand how the computers work. I don't understand how the systems work. That's why we as a board of commissioners only wanted a forensics expert to examine the Dominion machines to make sure that they can't transmit or receive information. And that request has been denied from Dominion voting machines. They won't even let Otero County have, not, and not the commissioners. I know that you're, you know, I know that we got a backdoor invitation the other day for the commissioners to come and look at the machines. That's, all that is a PR play from Dominion because they want to say.
Okay, let me clarify this.
If I can finish, please. Because I believe that Dominion wants to say, oh, well, we allowed Otero County to inspect the machines. I don't need to look at the machines. I need to have somebody like Dr. Lindberg over here. I, I would like for him to go in my place and look at the machine. But as soon as I make, as soon as I make that request, that request is denied, which only leaves us more skepticism.
Let me clarify that. It wasn't Dominion that was doing the invitations. It was our county clerk, Robin, that she wanted to show everybody. What else can we do to show that these machines are working correctly? Let me invite the commissioners. It was Robin.
Well, then why don't you, why don't you ask Robin to, why did Robin say whenever I said I would like a forensics expert to come in my place, Robin denied my invitation? Then why doesn't, if, if we want to be totally transparent, why don't we allow Dr. Lindberg or somebody of his stature to go examine the machines? And then everybody.
Sir, did you not see the machines at one time at the, at the voting machine warehouse? Correct me if I'm wrong. I, I'm thinking that we did invite you at one time.
Yeah, I, I was allowed about 15 minutes looking over Selena's shoulder.
Okay.
What, what, what they're talking about is a forensic audit where we actually get to spend time on the machine, looking at the files, running tools and really determining, you know, the insecurity or security of the, of the machine. But even in that short period of time, we discovered some major issues, that things that should have been on that machine were not on that machine.
Have you looked at the findings?
For example, the 2020 project file was missing. It wasn't there, okay?
Well, it wouldn't have been on the machines.
And the question I have is, who removed it? Why did they remove it? There's no reason to remove a recent election, a project file from the machine. And you had older project files on the machine. So clearly the machine configuration is not being maintained properly. The question is who's modifying it? I don't really believe it's you guys. You've got a third-party contractor that comes in and does, oh, we're going to remove small files and we're going to update your software. Now you guys, just like Coy, you guys aren't computer experts. You have no idea what they're doing. They could be doing anything to the machine, good, bad. And even the people that come out, if they just run some script off of a USB stick, they may not even know what it's doing to the machine. Someone sent them a script and said, run it.
They should have taken that first step from the invitation of the three commissioners, show up to the presentation that, from the two representatives from Dominion. And at that time, if you felt that you still, the questions weren't answered on those machines, let Robin know. I mean, it's communication. Robin, I still don't feel comfortable with these machines. We would like to get a foren, she's not hiding anything. We're willing to do whatever, but let's start one step, one step at a time. Please, that's all we ask. We're not hiding anything. We're honest. We're transparent. We always have been for 38 years.
In, in January of this past year, that request was made. And that was, that request to have a forensic expert of Mr. Lindberg's qualifications was made to the commission with Robin Holmes present and Robin stepped up and said that we couldn't because of statute, because the Secretary of State said we couldn't. And if he touched it or anyone else outside of Dominion, they would, they would decommission the machines. So we have tried that. We have tried that. We have asked for that and we were told that if we did, we were threatened with prosecution.
And Denise, it has never been my position from day one to come here and accuse your office. It has been to determine if this, this system is any good. It's not any good. The statistician showed you from Sandoval County, which is the same system you've got, it is shuffling the votes in the machine. That's the same one you've got. So when I'm, when I'm, and you are, you're rolling your eyes and Robin was on her phone the entire time and you wonder why people are frustrated with you. Okay. And y'all were missing chain of custody for 850 ballots. Until I saw that, I was, I was totally behind your processes and whatever it is that you I've got the evidence.
There you go, Erin, you're lying. We, and that's the other thing. We have, we've invited to sit down with the county clerk and go through the process and you guys won't do it. You won't sit down with us.
Oh, my gosh. Erin, we came into the office. People are seeing her.
The 200, the 200?
Yes, I did. And I asked for some information. I got almost none of it. I asked for, I asked for feedback on a few hundred names I still haven't heard. And then you accuse me of not giving.
Now, I was right for you, like Selena was busy, but she confirmed that I didn't work on that list.
Okay.
And she presented that to me.
No, they haven't. They haven't given me nothing back, zero things back. And they ignored a number of IPRA's.
I know they were working on that.
Okay, they haven't given me anything back. And I've got a few thousand more to give them. It'll take about 10 years.
Jim, I know you've been waiting patiently over there. Go ahead.
The only thing I got to say is if this is a law that you can't do the drop boxes, it'll be spelled out perfectly that it's a law. If it's a statute or something else, that doesn't make it law. I've been clear up to Washington fighting this with the forest servants stuff. If it's a resolution, it's not a law. The only way you get into law is take it into court and make a precedence of it and then they will rule on it and then it might become a law. That's all I got to say. Just because you say it's a law, doesn't make it a law.
Matt.
I'm sorry. I'd like to make a quick statement. Erin is flat-out lying. I personally witnessed her sitting at, in the clerk's office with Denise and Robin and her team. No, Erin, sit down. I'm talking now.
You don't get to.
Erin, Erin, sit down. I'm talking now. Robert's rules.
Erin, Erin, let him speak because it, it'll.
Then, then don't make an accusation and call somebody a liar.
It's not an accusation. Coy, stop talking over.
Don't, don't call somebody a liar and expect them to sit down and take.
It's a fact. I witnessed it. Coy, stop talking over me. I witnessed it myself.
I'll talk over you if I want to talk.
No, you can't, Coy.
Yeah, I can do.
Coy, just let him talk.
Then what am I doing right now?
Let, let Matt talk and then Erin can respond. You guys just calm down.
You lied, Erin. I will sign a sworn affidavit under the penalty of law and I can get more witnesses. Matter of fact, I even was going to do an IPRRA about.
Just do it already. Stop talking to that. Just do it.
David, I'm talking. Are there not?
What was my lie, Matt? Tell me my lie, please. I don't know what you're talking about.
Am I going to be able to finish speaking before people talk over me like the audience? Are we going to do, is there going to be, are you going to follow any of the rules?
Erin, just, just don't, don't respond to him.
Any of the rules? Because if not, I'm not going to follow any of the rules and none of my people are going to follow any of the rules anymore. So pick one. Are you going to have order in this meeting?
Are you going to finish saying what you want to say? Go for it.
Erin Clements is lying. And Denise spoke on it. Robin can speak on it. Everyone else that was there at that meeting can speak on it. You're lying and that's a fact.
I don't lie, Matt.
Okay, we're going to just take this to a.
Can I make one quick comment?
Okay.
So this gentleman back here is willing to sign a sworn affidavit to make a, an accusation against these people here. I think the whole reason we're here tonight is because there were sworn affidavits that were signed by people who worked in the 2020 election, who saw fraud, who saw inconsistencies. But what happened to those people? What happened to their affidavits? If they were taken seriously and this stuff was looked into, which there's videotapes, there's sworn affidavits, none of that stuff has fixed in you the situation that we're in. There's nothing that our government does right now that I have any faith in for my kids or my grandkids' future, none whatsoever. And if anybody can raise their hand right now and say what's going on in our country is headed in the right direction, I'd like to see those hands right now. Can anybody raise their hand that likes what's going on in our country right now? There's four of you. Okay. Anyway, I'm going to stop, but the sworn affidavits haven't eliminated the situation we're in right now. And it's sad and disgusting that we're afraid to spend a little money or put a little bit of our time into something to fight for our rights as American citizens.
Yeah.
Make a motion to change the vote, to remove the drop boxes and voting machines and conduct a handicap to a request to do those things.
Okay. I make a motion to reconsider a vote to remove the drop boxes, remove the voting machines and handicap ballots and we'll change the wording to a request. And I know that that's probably not what everyone wants to hear, but I think that it's what we have to do. So I make a motion. Does, do I get a second?
As, as, as I'm the one that has introduced the agenda item, I believe that I would probably have the final say on how the agenda item reads. Would I not, Roy?
I don't know for sure.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm, think I'm still the county commissioner and this is my agenda And, and I would, I would rather my agenda item that I have put on the agenda remain exactly as it's written and be voted on as written. So just call it the question as it is and we'll vote on it.
Selena, you need to vote no if you want to be against it.
Okay. So do we need a second?
To reconsider, discuss and reconsider. I want to understand the right way to.
A second.
They're, they're.
Well, you put it on.
Hang on a second.
Go ahead and read it.
They're still discussing.
So Coy, what is, what is your, what is your understanding, is it reconsider?
No, it's, no, it's to, 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 to hold the line, it's to, to. No, not to change the law, but it, it's to remove the ballot drop boxes, remove the voting machines and hand count the ballots, I think that.
So your understanding, the vote to yes, for yes is to remove them and to do a hand count? That's how you, you want the motion to be?
Yeah, and, and, and. Yeah.
No one's, you, you all have never gone contrary to that vote, it still stands.
I would say let's move to table this agenda item because we've already got our position on record. So let's just table it and then it just. Oh yeah, you're right, yeah, we did table it earlier.
What, what you're saying here Coy, I'm just gonna make sure what we're understanding. Discuss and reconsider means either rewrite it.
I, I think it's, I, I just feel like maybe it should be the position of the, our position is to remove the ballot drop boxes, remove the voting machines and hand count the ballots, that's our position as a commission board. We don't make the laws and we're, I mean, if, if we can actually do it, that's to be seen, but I would say this is the resolve of the county commission, this is what we would all like to see happen, this is, you know, I mean.
I think we need to reword it a little bit, to say the same thing, but not, we were, in our vote before, we were saying that's what's gonna happen on a demanding deal, that's what. And I don't know how true this is, I was told if we didn't change this vote or reword it that the paperwork's already in process that we would probably be arrested in the morning.
Could they arrest us for something like that David?
If you're asking me if a tyrant will, will act like a tyrant, absolutely. The point is, is the threat legitimate under a, a, a standard of right versus wrong? The fact of the matter is you had a vote and you've been threatened and you've been scared out of your original vote because you're afraid that someone's going to arrest you. That's the reason and if that's your reason, so be it and Coy, if you want to keep now just, that's, that's fine, I get that, but just be transparent about it, that's the reason why you're doing it. We would rather you just vote your conscience and, cause here's the deal, if you're afraid of being removed and you're not gonna represent your constituents, they're gonna start demanding for your removal or resignation or, or they're gonna work against you with, with other candidates. Either way, this doesn't solve the issue. The, the, the point here is that you are being coerced under threat of imprisonment, that's the point and it's wrong, it's immoral. Yeah, I've also, I could talk to you about this guy named Hitler, there was a law there in the Reichstag as well and they were just following the law.
Let's make a move to table this too.
We can't table it again, we already tabled it once today.
Do what?
We already tabled it once today, we can't table it again. Cause we tabled it at that first meeting, to do it now.
I still feel it needs to be rewrote. If you want to vote for it, let's vote, but that's how I'm gonna go with it. You can still say the same thing, it just needs to be rewrote in different languages. Because this right here means absolutely nothing except for we're gonna give.
You can just put it in a motion, we can vote on it, a motion to vote, a, a motion to remove drop boxes, remove voting machines and hand count the ballots. All in favor and all opposed?
That's not what it says, it says discuss and reconsider a vote.
I know, discuss and reconsider, so a vote, well, we're discussing, we just discussed and we're reconsidering and now put it to, for a motion to vote. Right? I mean, this is a, a motion to, I don't know, Roy's the one that wrote it, but discuss and reconsider a vote, well, we've discussed, we've reconsidered it, now we vote on it. The way I read it, I don't know.
I agree, so the motion is a motion to remove the drop boxes, remove voting machines and hand count ballots, that's the reconsideration of it, you're, you're, you're doing the vote over again. So it's just a motion to remove the drop boxes, remove voting machines and conduct hand count ballots, a hand count of the ballots.
Just vote and let's, let's see, let's see where y'all stand then. And, and at least we'll know, instead of waiting, because we're gonna wait till November and have no clarity, that's the problem. If you have, if we have a voice for it, we can fight and actually have the system in place for the process, but if we're gonna be suspended in limbo in the absence of clarity, then your previous vote, what does it mean? So this, just show people who you are and what you feel, what you believe on this issue and let's go home. And you just have to live with the consequences, one way.
Alright. I make a motion to reconsider a vote to remove drop boxes, remove voting machines and hand count ballots. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, we've talked about this so long and it's so late, I don't even know what time it is. Alright, do I get a second?
I'll second the motion.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes. Alright, it's late and it's time to go home, this meeting's adjourned.